I'd like to call to order a decision. Council member, February 2022. Tonight's meeting is a high. Meeting members are welcome to sit in person or remotely during the call. Councilmember Nixon?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Here.
Councilmember Falcone?
Still moved.
Second.
Councilmember Nixon, all those in favor? Sign if I was saying aye.
Aye. Your mic isn't.
Please continue with the roll.
Councilmember Pascal?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold?
Here.
Mayor Sweet?
Here. Thank you. Our study session tonight is on two subjects. The first is the Lake Street South and Lake Washington Boulevard promenade and concept development study. The second study session's subject relates to the neighborhood traffic control program policy revisions. If we finish the study session early, we may go into executive session to discuss possible litigation and/or the performance of a public employee. In any event, we will, we do expect to reconvene our regular meeting at approximately 7:30 PM. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we want to present both of those topics. And to provide those presentations, our transportation manager, Joel Fund, and our transportation planner, Victoria Kovacs, will be making the presentations. We'll be starting with the Lake Street South discussion, and we're just looking for council feedback on the various options that have been identified, and there'll be some recommended next steps during the presentation.
Great. Welcome, Joel, Victoria.
Great, thank you, city manager, and thank you, mayor. We do have a short presentation to share with you. And hopefully you can see my screen.
Yes.
Great. So Joel and I are both excited to be here to share with you the results of the Lake Washington Boulevard promenade study. And we'll review the study background and kind of the purpose for why we did this study, as well as some of the existing conditions and data analysis that we had done. We'll review the four corridor options as outlined in the memo, as well as some other recommendations that can be done, regardless of which option the council might be interested in. We'll recap some of the evaluation criteria we looked at, and we'll conclude with a discussion and next steps. So consideration of a promenade on Lake Washington Boulevard has been considered for quite some time. I pulled out some policies from the 2015 comprehensive plan, specifically in the shoreline area and the transportation master plan. First policies, like the first one, enhance Lake Washington Boulevard northeast and Lake Street South to improve their function for scenic views and recreation activities, as well as for local access and as a commute route. And the transportation master plan does have a specific action to consider developing a master plan for a lakefront promenade. More recently, the active transportation plan adopted last year also highlights to enhance pedestrian and bicycle facilities on the Lake Washington waterfront. This study looked at the waterfront from Second Avenue South to the intersection with Lakeview Drive near Carolan Point. And it was council asked as part of the June budget process to conduct data gathering and analysis and design concepts to address the issues and needs in the corridor. And the purpose of this study was to conduct that further analysis to identify constraints and opportunities, and develop and evaluate street design alternatives to improve the comfort of walking, cycling, and rolling along Lake Street, Lake Washington Boulevard, to attract more people to the waterfront. And as I mentioned, it's both regional and key local connection. And now I'm going to hand it off to Joel to talk about some of the existing data findings that we found.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. So yeah, I'm going to talk about a quick summary of some data collection that we did in advance of performing the study. That was in the summer of 2021. So just quick context setting, as you probably all are well aware, you know, this corridor is really a, you know, gem along the lake already with the three large waterfront parks, Brink, Marsh, and Houghton. Additionally, three additional access points, and all of that within a mile that, about a mile, that links Carolan Point and downtown Kirkland. And so this area is very popular. We have high pedestrian and bicycle usage along the corridor. There are, of course, sidewalks present on both sides currently, you know, of varying widths, five to 10 feet. And we have on-street bike lanes, and that is all part of the Lake Washington Loop, which is a really popular recreational cycling corridor, especially on the weekends. We do have quite a bit of volume, vehicle volume in this corridor, about 15,000 vehicles a day. And when we look at the amount of people, we did approximation of people moving in the corridor, we estimate that on a, on the Thursday that we collected data during the summer, about 11% of all the people moving in the corridor were either doing that by walking or biking or rolling, and then that increased all the way to 18% on a Saturday. One other thing that I would note is that as part of this data collection, we did find that we didn't have a major speeding problem in this corridor. Vehicle, average vehicle speeds were pretty much in line with the posted speed limit. This area supports a lot of residential development, and this just, you know, illustrates some of those, those activities, including garbage pickup. Of course, there's a lot of varying degrees of vehicle access to vehicle parking along the corridor, and this is in addition to deliveries and people who are, you know, providing services to folks on both sides of the corridor, as well as mail pickup. So a lot of different activities supporting those, those existing uses along the corridor. On-street parking, this corridor, historically, back, you know, many years, was a, you know, four-lane, two, four-lane corridor, two vehicle lanes in each direction, and that was in one of the very early road diets in the region. It was converted to the existing cross-section here that added a whole lot of parking along the corridor, curb to curb. It's about typically about 44 feet wide, and there's 60 feet of right-of-way pretty much consistently along the entire corridor. The on-street parking begins at 60th, and that's, you know, north of Houghton Beach Park there, and continues all the way to downtown. There's a combination of a lot of unregulated parking, where we don't have any time limits or anything, and then, of course, at the north end of the corridor, there is a two-hour time limit, and then parking is prohibited in front of the parks at night. And then, in addition, when we looked at this from a parking utilization perspective, we found that on Thursdays, the parking utilization varied from about 33% to 57%. And then on Saturdays, it varied corridor-wide from a, from 28% to 60, 62%. And so that shows that there's actually quite a bit of parking available in the corridor. And the conclusion from the data collection effort that our consultant did is that the corridor would likely be able to support eliminating, you know, parking to the, to the degree that project would need to do that, including eliminating parking along one side of all of Lake Washington Boulevard to implement like a promenade concept. One thing that's worth noting is that the, the parking popularity is not exactly consistent along the entire corridor. It's certainly, the demand for parking is highest at the north end of the, of the corridor near downtown. Next on the list is like the south end of the corridor, and then the middle is, is really where the, the parking is consistently, it seemed to be the lowest demand levels for, for parking. One other interesting parking note, we did have, collect data that is anonymized, information from a company that collects origins and destinations. And so we did look at that information and found that on a typical, on the, on weekdays, about 57% of the trips are less than five miles, parking trips, and surprisingly, on weekdays, 15% of trips were actually less than a mile. So, and then on the weekends, not surprisingly, those short, the percentage of short trips was reduced, more people were traveling to Kirkland from further to visit. This data was collected in the summer, so, you know, we, it's intuitive that those people, the more people are visiting from out of town. But it really did seem to indicate that there's a potential mode shift also when it comes to parking, is some of those short trips, you know, really short trips in particular. For people who are able to do so, it's an option to, you know, change, change modes. And, and again, we found that the, the shortest vehicle trips were also closer to, closer to downtown, that's where that was really concentrated. And then next slide, please. We also looked at lighting, and as, it may not be too surprising, as, as I'm sure many of you have been on the corridor at night, the lighting has kind of, you know, it hasn't changed in many, many years, while the context of the corridor has. And so there, we did analyze the lighting, and there is street lighting present, there is no specific pedestrian lighting, and the lighting is not particularly uniform, there's areas that are bright and varies that don't have much lighting at all. And then the lighting is not, we don't have dedicated lighting at the crosswalks. We have done some work over the years to try to enhance lighting at the crosswalks and provide adequate lighting, but it's been, always been using the existing streetlights along the corridor. And then, when it comes to crash history, this couple maps from our Vision Zero Plan that we recently adopted, this is a, a, a high, we identified this as a high priority corridor in the Vision Zero Plan. That is related to the number of crashes, and, and in the five years' history that we reviewed for the plan from 2016 to 2020, we have four serious injuries, and, and two of those involved pedestrians, and one of them involved cyclists, a cyclist. The crash, we did identify a couple of specific crash risks, that, a couple of patterns. One of those is pedestrians in crosswalks in dark, in the dark and at dusk, and then also northbound cyclists and having conflicts with vehicles driving into, onto the side streets and onto driveways on that northbound side, which was one of the interesting patterns that we'd seen that was kind of concerning. We also, we did, this was more of a, you know, technical analysis with the, with the study and pulling all this information together, and so we didn't do any specific outreach, but we do hear a lot from the community about this corridor. So we did go through Q Alert and through the, you know, my Kirkland, and look at the kinds of requests we get historically, and the vegetation, we hear a lot of vegetation concerns, a lot of concerns about sidewalk damage, we've heard about bike, debris in bike lane, concern about speeding and noise from vehicles, and then we did have specific comments around three rapid flashing beacon locations, the one at 62nd, the one at 64th, and then the one at 10th Avenue South, which is the one, I think that's the one that's pictured here, but, so, yeah. So those are some of the things that we've heard, and we, you know, took into account when we were looking at the corridor designs, and all of this information fed into developing, along with, you know, our goals and policies, and kind of what the, the mission of this with the corridor was to look at how we can make it more of a promenade, and so that all fed into the corridor design options, which Victoria will go over now.
Great. So before we get into the options, I thought it would be helpful to have a quick couple of cross-sections about what is there today. So on Lake Street, the north end of the corridor, it is a shared lane between people biking and people driving with some wide parking lanes, and it is more in the downtown context. And at Second Avenue South, and pretty much south of that point, there are on-street bike lanes, parking lanes on either side, and, and drive lanes. The sidewalk width does vary quite a bit, but it is no less than, than five feet at any point. So with looking at the scenario options or the design options, we looked at a lot, we looked at 15, kind of combined them down to five general categories, and then refined them into the corridor length options I'll present to you now. And those were refined according to that project goal to improve the comfort of walking and rolling along the corridor, as well as feedback we heard from the Transportation Commission and our own city standards. So option one would combine both bike lanes on the west side, the waterfront side of the corridor, and it would maintain parking on the east side of the corridor, and there would be some sort of separation between the on-street bike lanes and the drive lanes that could look like a bunch of different things, that would be a bigger conversation with maintenance, but essentially, that would be the configuration of the corridor, and that would allow us to maintain a fairly high number of spaces. There would be some transitions needed at the north and south ends, back to the one-way bike lanes further south, and what happens in downtown. And we would expect planning level costs around $11 million. And as I mentioned, you know, how that bike lane is configured is also another kind of consideration, it could be on-street painted with buffers, or you could kind of do the full meal and, and raise the bike lanes to the sidewalk level, widen the sidewalk a bit, add trees. Of course, that kind of level of civil engineering is a lot more involved, new stormwater, things of that nature, so the cost would be much higher. But that is essentially the option, and I'll just quickly share the role plot that we included as part of your packet as well, just to frame what these maps are. So they show from the north is to the right, so Carolan Point is down here to the left, and downtown is here to the right, and it shows generally what that cross-section is as it applies to the corridor. So connecting to the existing bike lanes, south of Lakeview Drive and south of the corridor study extents, it would be one-way bike lanes as they are now, there'd be some two-way transition at the current RRFB in front of the I-Vars, where you could begin the two-way protected bike lanes, and that would extend all the way to downtown. And actually, we would recommend, instead of ending at Second Avenue South, where the bike lanes end today, to extend all the way to the future scramble intersection at Kirkland Avenue, strictly from a connectivity and safety standpoint. Of course, this would need to have a bigger conversation with businesses and parking utilization, but strictly from an engineering connectivity standpoint, there would need to be a safe, all ages and abilities transition from that point at Second to, you know, Marina Park and Lake Shore Plaza. We'll go back to the PowerPoint now. Option two would be very similar to option one, the only difference is you would keep parking on the west side instead of the east side, but the cost would be the same, and those same transition points would occur at the south and north ends of the corridor. Option three is keeping bike lanes where they are on either side and adding protective buffer. And again, what that is or what that looks like, there are very options, varying options what we could do with that, slightly lower cost, but about the same, around $10 million. And then option four, if we really did do a full shared-use promenade, again, that would be a very dramatic civil engineering investment, where we redo the stormwater, trees, curbs, everything, and so that would be a significantly higher estimated cost, around $21 million. And again, there'd still be transitions that would need to occur at the south and north ends, and this was really used as a, as a comparison, as a, as a baseline to the other options. And this was really used as a, as a comparison, as a, as a baseline to the other options. And there are a couple of other recommendations that came out of the study, regardless of which option you might be interested in furthering. Joel, do you want to walk through these?
Sure. So, um, the standard I, one, I, one idea that is baked into these other alternatives, but also stands alone is standardizing the RRFBs at all 10, 10 crossings and implementing rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks that don't currently have them. Second Avenue South, 10th Avenue South and 59th are the highest priority based on crash history and adjacent land uses. Interestingly, 10th Avenue South is a 2023 NSP project idea. And then 59th is a, is a priority, was identified as a priority because of some, the crash that occurred there in 2018. One thing is we were looking at this more closely, realized that the RFB was installed post-crash and, and kind of in response to that in March of 2019. And then we do have at 62nd and 64th, other citizen RRFB requests. Also, looking at crosswalk illumination, refreshing pavement markings is another thing that we continue to look at. And then also curb extensions at some of these locations would be another, another thing that could be done independently of some, some of this work. It would, of course, we'd have to work out the stormwater issues and exactly the design of those. But that does provide a feeling of comfort for people crossing and puts them out more in the, in the, you know, safe space in the street where they are more visible to people walking. And then another item that does show up in those other planning level cost estimates that Victoria shared is lighting improvements. And so some of the concepts that could stand on their own would be installing pedestrian scale lighting along the park frontages that can be rather dark right now. Filling in the areas where there is zero illuminance along the corridor with, with your streetlights. Or looking specifically back at the marked crosswalks and replacing and relocating light poles to bring them up to standards for light, light levels and, and pole placement. So those are some of the smaller projects that, that were identified. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Victoria to talk about the evaluation.
Great. So for those four corridor options, we looked at a whole host of evaluation criteria. This is the final list, which is, you know, priority on safety, mitigation of crash, crash risk factors for walking, cycling and driving, improving the comfort and level of stress for people walking and biking on the corridor. We want it to be an intuitive facility, you know, not confusing for anyone using the corridor, regardless of what mode you're using. Maintenance consideration, certainly something that played in. You know, if there was a phasing potential, could we do something in the short term and then come in later in the long term for a variety of design configurations, accommodating those residential services like mailbox, trash, driveways, pickups and drop-offs, the impact to existing street trees, the amount of on-street parking that could be maintained, the potential for stormwater improvements and the relative costs. There were a couple of other criteria we looked at, but we found, you know, all the options really achieved these criteria. And really we realized we wouldn't have proposed an alternative if they didn't meet these criteria. So we called them screening criteria. And that would be traffic calming, you know, physical separation between modes, addressing some of those sidewalk damage panels and the ability to accommodate utilities. So this is the evaluation matrix that was also part of your packet. And the way this matrix works is it identifies where one option might have an advantage, which is a smaller dot or a significant advantage, which is a bigger dot. And when we presented these to Transportation Commission, the commission felt that option one balanced the most of these criteria in terms of, you know, improving the safety for walking and biking, but also balancing the needs for residential services and maintaining the most amount of on-street parking. This evaluation matrix did include a no-build option, at least for reference, and that big promenade. So that the full spectrum of what can be done on the corridor. And in looking at them strictly evenly across the board, you know, option one and option two scored quite closely. And when additional points were given to the more of the safety and comfort factors like crash risk factors or level of traffic stress, option one and two definitely rose above the best, the others. So with that, we do have a couple of recommended next steps and then would like to answer your questions or discussion. So Joel, you want to take it over?
Sure. One thing that I did want to highlight is that the, the Transportation Commission did look, we did take this information to the Transportation Commission and they supported the option, option one and felt like that was the, the best balance of the various modes, provided the, the most amount of on-street parking and also provided the most intuitive and comfortable facility for people traveling, you know, people traveling by bike or, or walking or rolling along the corridor. So, um, so what we're recommending for next steps is including a preferred corridor design alternative in the 2024 TMP update. When we think of this as a preferred corridor, it really is about the, the, kind of the funding amount. This would certainly not be the, the last, the last conversation about this. We would engage the community in this during the TMP update. And then likely at any point, once you actually, once we actually move forward with the, the project. But the, what we wanted to get out of this exercise was the relative feasibility of implementing a promenade concept and then also the relative cost of that. Because depending on the option would, you know, when we're trying to build a 20-year transportation plan and prioritize that, that's a, you know, key element that, um, this, that this process will help guide. We are going to be evaluating the posted speed limit on the corridor as part of the 2023 citywide speed limit policy update and implementation project that we'll be getting going on here shortly. One small idea that came out of the study that would be a, a fairly straightforward one to implement is implementing one-way circulation at Houghton Beach Park parking lot to reduce the conflicts and, 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 and that type of thing at that location. And then also identifying a preferred parking management strategy for the corridor as part of the broader evaluation of downtown parking in 2023. Just every time we're thinking about this is just making sure that we're mindful of the role that this corridor plays in that and how, how those two things are related. And so with that, we'd be happy to, Victoria and I'd be happy to answer any questions or, and happy to hear your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you both. Who wants to start us off? Councilmember Nixon?
Thanks very much. Well, as you know, my concern has always been with the loss of parking. And I'm, I'm still concerned with, about the loss of half the parking. And, and the data shows that the peak usage is currently 57%. That means if you lose half the parking, it's going to be completely fall at, at times. And we tried to at least say that it would be mitigated to some extent by the fact that some people could walk or bike. But of course, we know that's not true for people with limited mobility or people with young children, et cetera. So I, I, I continue to have that concern. But the question I have is, did you look at whether the parking is used mostly by people who are using the west side of the street, like visiting people on the west side and visiting the parks? Or is the parking used mostly by people on the east side? Because it seems like who are, you know, residents or visiting residents. Because it just seems like that would be a factor. Because if you choose the wrong side for where you put the parking, then you are increasing the number of times people have to cross the street. Was that assessed at all?
We were not able to get to the, the desk, the specific destinations of where people were, once they had left their vehicles, where they were actually going. One, one thing we did observe is that, is that there is, one of the reasons in the end that we felt like, because we didn't know that, that the parking on the east side was preferred is that because there is a less, less prevalence of driveways on that side, we lose less parking by, by eliminating parking on the west side. Although, you know, for things like the parks and things like that, it is a, it's, you know, it's, it's a street to cross. The other feeling was, is that the, the treatments we're, we're bringing to the street overall would also help make that crossing more comfortable for everybody with some of the other elements we're, we're putting in and the shortening of the crossing and the, those types of things.
Yeah, yeah, I agree that especially putting in more RRFBs. If you can convince people to actually walk to them and use them instead of jaywalking, and so we got to make sure we don't make jaywalking legal. You know, that, that, that would mitigate the concern because of the curb bulbs and the RRFBs, making it safer to cross. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curtis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Joel and Victoria. I am really glad we did this study. This is something that we particularly heard during COVID that our community was interested in doing this. And I just think it's great. I prefer design option one. I do have a question about option four. It's beautiful, but I see on your matrix that you anticipate more conflicts in that area. And I'm assuming that means there's more pedestrian and bike conflicts when there's a shared, shared lane like that? Is that what's happening there?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. So you anticipated, one of my questions in option one B is if we have a six and a half foot median, I'd love to see how we can put some street trees and vegetation in there. We are potentially losing some very beautiful trees if we move forward with this project. The mayor and I are admiring the catsura trees that will go away. One of my questions is, we're stopping the double lanes at 59th, which is the north end of Houghton Beach Park as opposed to the south end. Was that a design constraint or what was the reasoning behind that?
Yeah, the reasoning behind that was we wanted to maintain the center left turn lane, which provides access to the Houghton Beach parking lot and to the office building across the street, which is also public parking after business hours for the park.
Okay.
So it was really more of a operational.
Okay, good. Thank you. That makes sense. And I really liked the opportunity to extend this all the way north to the scramble. The scramble is going to be transformational in that area. And I really like that we would include those bike lanes to that. When we do the speed evaluation, I have a request that we extend the speed valuation past Carolan Point. The speed increases at 35 miles an hour. As soon as people hit that light, they accelerate on their way to Bellevue. And that's where we're getting a lot of our noise complaints. And my suspicion is they're speeding in that area, but I could be wrong. I support the one-way circulation at Houghton Beach. There are a lot of conflicts. I use that beach a lot. One of the suggestions I have is to consider a drop-off load unload designated area in both that park and Marsh Park so that people with small children and paddleboards and toys will have a chance to unload their items before they have to go park. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So before I can offer my comments, I wanted to read a little bit, a little statement for, for everyone. And then I will kind of talk in my own words. But I'm pleased that we've, we have this opportunity to consider the feasibility of various policy options for the future of Lake Street and Lake Washington Boulevard. And so in the interest of full disclosure, I do want the council and the community to know that the feasibility analysis was developed by the city, but in consultation with the Transpo Group, a Kirkland-based consulting firm where, where I am a partner. I did not participate in this work, nor was I even exposed to the work. And in any case, the work is now complete. And so as we now explore what we as a city and the community can do to redefine this corridor, it's a conversation I want to be a part of, and I believe I have a thoughtful, I have thoughtful contributions to offer. That being said, I just want to say that I'm really glad that we're beginning to reimagine this corridor. So thank you to your leadership and your efforts, Victoria and Joel. Very much appreciate it. I remember first talking about the idea of a promenade in 2008, 15 years ago. And this idea was for, I can recall, this idea was first brought up by former council member Tom Neer when he and I served on the Transportation Commission together. And it was, I know it was a topic that he was very passionate about and I, and I, I talked to him over the weekend. And he was very excited to see this concept. So it's great, it's great that we're here today. I think a lot of the things that we're doing here is we're evaluating different feasibility aspects. And we're trying to address a number of the questions that were raised when we've, when we talked about this a couple of years ago during COVID and looking at a pilot study. And there was very, very good questions raised and Councilmember Nixon raised issue about parking. And I think we have now, we have a lot better data to be able to help answer those questions and, and help make some thoughtful decisions going forward. The parking utilization, I think, is helpful in that I think there's opportunities to address parking in a way. And I think the management strategies that you suggest as a recommendations is part of that. So that's, happy to see that. The, the usage numbers were really, were really interesting to see just how much usage this quarter gets today, particularly in the summer by both pedestrians and people on bikes. It's good to have those numbers because it's pretty, it's pretty astonishing. I don't know of too many other corridors that, that have that amount of, of walkers and rollers. So, and think how much more could actually use a corridor if there were even better enhanced facilities. So I think there's just lots of ways that we can, we can really think to, to use, use the corridor and to enhance it for all, all people. And I think about the parks that are along the corridor, downtown, Carolan Point. You have all these destinations that people want to go to, not just within the community, the people, but people visiting to the community. So in terms of my, what my thoughts on the options, I, I also support option one. It seems like it provides the highest level of comfort for users. It separates the bike, the bike facilities from the walking facilities. And I think that is particularly important on high-usage corridors. Because if, because we all know if they're all combined, it's pretty much you're, you're dodging everyone, especially if you're on a bike and that can be dangerous. I, I also like option one because it allows, allows more parking. I think at first I was option two, where parking was on the, the water side. I was like, oh, that, that makes sense and people don't have to cross the street. But you actually do lose a lot, you know, quite, quite a number of more stalls. But I think those are things to kind of explore with the community too, to see what they think. I do want to make sure that anything, as we move forward, that there are some very narrow sections of the sidewalk that we do look at what it's going to take to bring them up to at least a uniform 10 feet, the entire distance. the entire distance. I just had a couple of questions to ask. And now you kind of heard where my thoughts are. Could you kind of just talk about the public process kind of going forward? I know we're suggesting to put it into the Transportation Master Plan. But this is a big deal probably for a lot of different people, not just folks that live along the corridor, but people that use the corridor and people that might come to the corridor from other areas. How are we going to make sure that we get the input that we need? Because the Transportation Master Plan process is a bigger process, right? It's, we're talking about a lot of different things there. I really want to make sure that we're very open and transparent with the community.
I think from transportation perspective is that as we look at the corridor and we gather all of this data and you look at what's going on in the corridor, it does, you know, it is, you know, really beloved by the community. And there, you know, it's a dense area. There's a lot of people who live on the corridor that this is, this is their only, this is how they get to and from their residences or their, you know, that, you know, there are a few businesses along here and stuff like that. And so there's, it's really important that we think about that going forward. And so we really do envision this being a multiple-step process of, you know, these projects don't happen overnight. And it's going to be a really big ambitious project. So we would see it being a conversation at more of a high level as part of the TMP update. And then depending on where it lands through that prioritization process and that discussion is, that would give us some direction to go out and have a, when we're ready, have a more detailed conversation with the community. And it would be much more, we'd be pretty much starting with create a promenade. And this is the kind of, you know, funding we have available. And then have a conversation about how best to make that so it works for the broader community as well as the people that will rely on it every day. So I see this as, you know, the beginning of, you know, a long conversation as we move from kind of idea down to, you know, what we would ultimately, you know, put out there on the street.
Okay, yeah, I think having that public input is going to be critical. And I just, not just because council is saying, hey, we like option one or two or three or whatever, that the community also sees that there was a breadth of evaluation done of many different options, that we don't want to lose that. I think that's an important storyline that we want to share as more people learn about this. So definitely support the recommended next steps. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor, Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Joel and Victoria. Really appreciate the level of analysis and thinking that was done as part of this promenade study covering safety, parking, resident access, the street channelization and the protected bike lanes. A lot of great thinking here. To support option one, and I, Joel, you highlighted the fact that there are, this will be likely happening in phases. And the memo talks about several things that could happen as quick wins. And I appreciated that look, mentioning forward. With option one, there is work to do to have the sidewalk built out to full width in places. I'd like to make sure that we have some more details on those sidewalk projects. Because while there are quick wins with paint and other things that you mentioned in the memo, I also want to make sure that we understand the individual sidewalk projects so we can start to consider those for the CIP and other things. Because those may be the more involved costly things we want to do first in conjunction with some of those other quick wins. But I'd like to understand what that is, whether there's right-of-way acquisition that needs to happen and things like that. Because when I think about a promenade, even though some of the more significant visible changes are going to be in handle, how we handle people rolling, I also think about people walking. Want to make sure that we frontload some of those investments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Joel and Victoria, for the presentation and all the hard work. And I agree with a lot of what's been said by my fellow councilmembers and appreciate the Transportation Commission's recommendation of option one. And I think I agree with them. And it sounds like most of my fellow councilmembers that if we were proceeding with this today, I think I'd really want us to proceed with option one. And I appreciate, Joel, I guess I should ask, the Transportation Commission would continue to be part of any process going forward as far as looking at more of the details associated with these options? Or even, or even the details associated with option one, including the sort of staged approach to option one?
Yeah, they would be, continue to be involved. And this is an item that is on their work plan and will continue to be for the foreseeable future.
Okay, that's great. Couple of questions then about money. The dollar figures we saw in the presentation, Victoria, if I wasn't mistaken, you, I think you described them as design dollars or something to that effect. That's not the capital costs.
Yes, that would be the design and construction, or I guess it would be the construction costs.
Oh, it does include construction. Thank you. Okay. I have a little bit better sense of the magnitude then. Thank you. I appreciate that. So then really just one question. I don't know if it's a question, Joel, I know you have a ton of experience seeking grant funding for transportation projects. Julie, I'm sure you do too, and of course, our city manager does. Just, I'd like to explore a little bit just the likelihood that this type of project would be a successful applicant for grant money from some of our known sources of grant funding.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just based on your experience and knowledge and experience. Did I say experience twice? That's how experienced you are, Joel. You're so experienced that I mentioned experience twice.
There we go. Thank you for that. So I would say that especially once downtown is, downtown Kirkland is, if it is designated as an urban center regionally, that that would certainly help our competitiveness. We do feel like because of the regional nature of this corridor that it should be competitive for grants. That's always a little bit of a, you know, roll of the dice. One challenge in some ways that we have talked a bit about is that the facilities do exist. So there are bike lanes already. There are sidewalks already. And so that does, you know, for better, for worse. We're trying to go, I feel like, from good to great here. And so in some ways, that might harm our competitiveness, unfortunately. But I think that be given the, you know, the volumes on the corridor and the level of people that we are serving, that would definitely, you know, be in our favor as well. So we feel pretty good about this being that kind of, you know, competitive process that we could put out there regionally. I'm sorry, I can't, I think you're.
Thank you, Joel. I appreciate that. If option one was included in the Transportation Master Plan, then it would be an unfunded project. So it's going to be competing with, for budget dollars and grant dollars from, with the myriad of additional transportation projects that we have in our Transportation Master Plan.
Correct. Yes.
But it would be, it would be competing on even ground, but it would be competing.
Yes, we would be, you know, with the TMP, we'll be adopting a new 20-year plan. And then, you know, thinking about how a project like this would, you know, prioritize against, these are conversations we'll be having with the commission and with council in the future, how a project like that would prioritize against improvements along the Cross Kirkland Corridor or, you know, improvements in the 85th Station area. And, you know, unfortunately, we can't do all the projects first. You, I know you know that. But those are the kinds of discussions that we would need to have as part of that development of the TMP.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions for me, for you two. And thank you for this work. I think it came together really in a beautiful way. But when you did the surveys, when you were counting walkers and bikers, did you also count all the traffic on the west side of the street?
Yeah, we did that with video. And the video covered both sides of the street.
Okay, great. So those numbers are incorporated in there?
Yes.
The difficulty that I have with the west side of the street is that it is too narrow to walk two people at a time down it. Not, you know, even worse with a dog or two. So I don't know if the plans incorporate any level of increasing the width of that sidewalk. I expect it would be pretty expensive. The other question I have is, I also support option one. But what I would like to see, and I would like to see a rendering of what the interface of option one at the scramble would look like.
Okay. Yeah, I, one, I would say one thing that we have thought about with the scramble is, you know, transitioning from a two-way facility can be, two-way cycling, you know, facility can be tricky. And the scramble is a great way to make that a lot easier because the cyclists would be able to, you know, there'd be the all-walk phase. It would be a little bit, you know, chaotic, but at the same time, it would provide, yeah. But it would provide for a very nice transition for people to, you know, go through, down Kirkland Avenue and through Lake Shore Plaza and connect up with the, you know, the existing cycling facilities that go to the north. So the downtown is a bit of a gap in the existing, you know, biking system. So it would really create a very comfortable, continuous, you know, connection through downtown.
Great. Thank you for that. Any further discussion? I think you got your work done tonight. With that, city manager, you want to transition?
I think so. So we have the same two presenters, but we're going to go a little more small scale. So this is an update on the Neighborhood Traffic Control Program. And again, we're looking for council feedback on tonight. Once again, here are Victoria and Joel.
So I, we're going to change things up. And Victoria started the last one. I'm going to start this one. So, yeah, we're pretty pleased to, been wanting to get to this for a while and re-invigorate and reinvent the Neighborhood Traffic Control Program policy and with some revisions. And so that's what we're here to talk to you this evening about. We do, Victoria did a great job of, you'll see on these first few slides, some wonderful historical documents from the, from the past. Because this program has been around a long time and has been a great program for the community. And this is really not a, this is a refresh and refurbishing a very successful program so that it can bring it, it's very, very 2000 right now. And we want to bring it up into the 2020s. So with that all, next slide, please. So just a little quick history. So this program was established in 1993 to address residential traffic volume and speed concerns. It had quite a bit of staff resource committed to it. And at the same time, Kirkland was quite a bit smaller at the time. And so there was a lot of focus on the neighborhood traffic control and speeding concerns. And then the program was discontinued in 2009 due to the Great Recession. The Neighborhood Traffic Program coordinators no longer work for the city. And then in 2011, with annexation, the city expanded. And then in 2014, the city was able to rehire a part-time Neighborhood Traffic Control Program coordinator. It was a part-time position for a much larger city. And so it was really kind of a different service level than was the initial in, you know, iteration of the program. And then we had another gap in having somebody to run the program in 2020 when Kathy Robertson retired. And then, of course, in 2022, we adopted our Vision Zero Action Plan, which really focused on a safe systems approach and wanted to really kind of lean into that with the Neighborhood Traffic Control Program. And then also, in this last budget, we increased the amount of money, doubled the amount of money that's in the budget for the Neighborhood Traffic Control Program for $50,000, from $50,000 every other year to $50,000 a year, which gives us a bit more money to implement some of these ideas. So next slide, please. So we get a, the Neighborhood Traffic Control Program is not just about speeding in, on streets. We get a lot, handle a lot of different requests through this program. We got a lot of different signage requests, requests for curb paying due to conflicts with mailboxes or with, which we actually don't do painting around mailboxes anymore. So I should be clear about that. But another better example would be with near driveways to address site distance issues. There's no, the no parking mailbox sign authorizations where, you know, people in the community can do that. And then also site distance evaluations, people concerned about visibility in intersections and making sure we're working with adjacent property owners to trim vegetation that is restricting site distance because that's a serious safety issue. And then also looking at, in some cases, people parking in locations that restricts site distance, dealing with streetlight requests. And then just a number of other requests that we get over time around signs and that type of thing. And then, of course, concerns about speeding, which is one of the, you know, popular topics that we hear from people about, too. So with this, I'm going to hand it over to Victoria to talk about the details of the process.
Great. So the policy changes that we're recommending is more specific to those speeding complaints. So I've included a flow chart here to when we get a resident request through our Kirkland. It could be routed to police for enforcement or targeted monitoring of an area, or it could be routed to Public Works. And when it is routed to us, we typically do a traffic study where we look at speeds and volumes, and we leave out counters for a week. And based on the results of that study, we would either, you know, do a small level of intervention, which could just be, you know, education or signing or striping. Or we may do a more involved signing and striping project or further evaluation to do something like traffic circles or speed cushions. So the NTCP process for traffic calming in response to speed complaints is a phased approach, kind of what I just described, that starting at the low end of intervention that are lower cost, easier to implement measures like deploying the portable speed radar trailer or doing 25 mile an hour pavement markings, moving up to phase two where we might do permanent speed radar signs or painted curb extensions like the photo. Or phase three where we might do traffic circles, speed cushions, raised crosswalk and the like. So again, the policy revisions are really more specific to that phase three, the highest level of intervention. Here's another great image from the archives that I've found from the Norcreek neighborhood. But essentially, the current policy I've found, uh, from the Norkirk neighborhood. But essentially, the current policy, uh, it's in our roadway pre-approved plan. So the update would be an administrative update, but we wanted to present it to you because it does have a component of community outreach. And that outreach, um, there are three key components we wanted to highlight to you all. First is that it does require a very broad group of stakeholders, a broad community to engage. Uh, so if you were considering speed cushions, for example, you would engage not only the residents who live on the street of that, um, proposed speed hump, but also on local streets that feed into the street, nearby residents in the neighborhood who might use it to reach other destinations, uh, as well as broader stakeholders like homeowners associations, uh, neighborhood associations, fire, police, school, transit agencies and businesses. Additionally, the engagement is more of an empower level of engagement. So it does require the neighborhood to form a task force that meets regularly to develop a traffic calming plan. And based on the level of community acceptance, that could be a few month process, it could be a year or longer process. And lastly, the community acceptance is a very high threshold. Uh, 70% of the community has to approve a traffic calming measure. And that has done through ballots like this image here that's mailed out, uh, to the neighborhood. So I've written this out in a flow chart of what the current process is. So first, the city would identify the areas influenced of any traffic calming device, which does include several streets and, uh, neighborhoods, as I just described. We would identify those stakeholders and create that community task force. The design would be developed with the task force over a regular period of time. Once the plan is ready, then that plan would be set out to the community in a mailer. It typically required two weeks of comment period. The design would be refined, brought back to the task force, and then a ballot would be sent again with the refined plan. And if 70% of the community or greater accepted, uh, voted yes on the plan, it would be implemented. If less than that, 68%, it would be a no. And it would not be further pursued. So what we'd like to do is, um, refine that engagement and streamline the process a bit so we can do more of these traffic calming measures. I think I noted in the memo, the last time, uh, traffic circle or speed hump has been implemented was in the early 2000s. So it's a, a tool we haven't used for a while. So we'd like to revisit it. Uh, we'd like to do a more focused group of stakeholders, still engaging those who live on the street or on the streets that feed into that street, as well as businesses on that street, uh, but not the broader neighborhood associations and homeowner associations, unless we've really heard, um, really strong opposition to some particular device. Additionally, we'd like to take more of an approach, um, as with any, uh, capital improvement project where the city would be really more leading the design than a neighborhood task force. And we would do still direct outreach, uh, door-to-door, probably for those immediately adjacent to a device, as well as a mailer, probably for those broader, um, streets adjacent or feeding into that street in question. And lastly, we would like to remove the balloting process as we would still require engineering criteria, and that would validate the need for doing a, a high level of engagement or a high level of intervention. So it really is more of a safety improvement than, um, uh, an optional thing that we're kind of asking the neighborhood to vote on. So that is this proposed engagement process flow chart. We would develop the conceptual design. We would still identify stakeholders and either do a door-to-door engagement or a mailer for broader outreach. Would still allow time for comment. Um, we can refine the design in response to those comments. But really, at that point, we wouldn't go back again with a balloting. It would be more, how do we implement this? And, um, once it's ready to be implemented, then we would inform the neighborhood, just like we would with any capital project, the construction. And this is a comparison between the two processes. Um, with that, Joel, do you want to jump in on the engineering criteria?
Sure. So, um, wanted to just kind of outline some of the changes that we're making to this, um, policy. Um, so we would be extending traffic calming to collector streets with a residential context. Um, we do have a varying degree of, uh, col- streets that are labeled collectors, identified as collector, collector streets in our functional classification map. For example, um, Waverly, uh, in the West Market neighborhood is a collector street. Um, and it's very different than some other streets that we would identify as collectors. So in those streets that feel more like neighborhood collectors, you know, in a residential neighborhood, um, feel like that it would, it'd be appropriate to look at those as potential for, um, uh, implementing these types of devices ultimately. Um, the maximum vehicle volumes, increasing that from 3,000 vehicles per day to 4,000. Um, we would be changing to, uh, allow phase one and phase two measures, basically signing and striping, uh, on streets that have, um, at least a five mile per hour speeding. Currently, that's, that's seven. Um, but, uh, for phase three measures, we would still require, uh, that to be, uh, exceeding the speed limit, um, by seven miles per hour or greater. Um, you know, this is just really trying to look at these as, uh, not as a little less maybe as a, as a community enhancement and involvement project and more as, um, you know, as we look at it this from a safe, safe systems approach, as when, um, we have a average speed where people are, well, with speed where people are doing, uh, 32 miles an hour, that's something that we need to, on a residential street that's marked as 25, that that's something we need to do something about. Um, we would, uh, cons- consider, um, with ma- phase one and phase two measures, um, maybe considered for emergency vehicle routes, bus routes, routes with higher volumes, um, uh, of long wheelbase vehicles like trucks and boat trailers, um, as because they don't, you know, impact, um, you know, in, put intrusions into the road. And we would, um, do before and after studies would be required for phase three measures. Um, just, we want to clarify that and make sure, um, that that's clear because we want to make sure that we're learning for, from each of these. And we're also making sure that we're not, um, there aren't any, you know, unintended consequences that we, that we, um, need to address. And then, so for next steps, what we would be doing is this is a Minister of Policy. So, um, based on, uh, council's, uh, feedback, we would be updating, uh, policy R20. Uh, we would also be updating the city's website. Victoria has that pretty much ready to go. So we can, um, update the website and roll this out. And then the other thing is a public facing web map. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the, um, a pretty basic look on spreadsheet that we've got on the website that shows where we've collected, uh, speed and volume data historically. Uh, Victoria has been working on with, um, uh, our GIs folks on a web map that would be much more intuitive and useful for people to find out, um, you know, find that information and, um, and that kind of thing. So, um, that's where we are. And with that, we take any questions or comments.
Okay. Somebody want to kick us?
Oh, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I interrupted, um, Mayor, but I did also want to note that I think this was highlighted in the memo, but I do like to, um, you know, recognize our commission, Transportation Commission and all their hard work. And they also, um, supported, um, strongly supported this, uh, this policy change. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much, Joel. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Joel. Thanks, Victoria. Uh, yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned the Transportation Commission because we don't want to forget about their work on, on these. So, you know, I really feel this is a timely update, especially since we increased the budget, uh, for the traffic, uh, traffic calming program as part of this last CIP update. So proud of that and, uh, want to make sure that that, that money is well spent. And, you know, kind of going back in history again, uh, one of the reasons I was excited about being annexed into the city, uh, when I lived on Finn Hill, was that Kirkland was really focused on, uh, safe streets, slowing speeds through neighborhoods, both in street design and physical calming measures. But that was also at the same time that the program was disbanded. So it was, you know, it, it was tough to kind of have that sink in at the time. And ever since that, you know, it's been something that's been on my mind. And I know it has been with, with others, especially with, uh, the formation of the Neighborhood Safety Program and seeing how projects that would be discussed at that during that program process, you know, related to traffic calming and slowing speeds just never ranked against the crosswalk improvements and things like that, um, as well. So, you know, it really kind of came to light that this program was still very necessary, but maybe we need to kind of think about it in, in different ways. Um, so I'm glad that we're looking at this. Uh, you know, that, that, that threshold for a ballot by the neighborhood, 70% and going out there and, and having people vote and then talking about, well, what should that study area be, you know? But if it's a street that a lot of people use, it's, you know, there's always that conflict about who do you ask too? And, uh, it just, it's, it's just a time-consuming process. You know, it made some people happy, made some people angry. Uh, I don't know. I've never really come across a process like that in other cities, uh, to that degree. And so I think it's, it's clear that that has made it difficult to address speeding concerns, uh, over time. And, and, and I think speeding's concerns are safety concerns. And, you know, I think I kind of see them one in the same, right? And so I want to make sure with the adoption of Vision Zero and all our other supporting policies that that's the policy piece. And now I would like to make sure staff have the ability to address those safety issues without an onerous process that basically doesn't allow anything to happen. Um, doesn't mean that we don't get public input. I think that's still very important. But when it's a safety issue and there's a, we, we need to come up with a solution. It might not always be a physical device, like you said, but I think, I think how you've crafted this and the changes you've made, I think make, make a lot of sense. I think it would, uh, be very worthwhile to try it and see, you know, uh, where we end up. So, uh, I just want to, want to thank you for thinking through that. And, uh, I'm excited to kind of see where this goes.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, well, I agree with, um, almost everything that, um, Councilmember Pascal just said, probably everything, actually. I don't know why, why I had a disclaimer on there. But, um, so I'll just, uh, highlight a couple of things. I do, I think it's a great idea, um, to sort of, um, I think modernized is not, is not quite the right word, but, you know, examine this program. Is it working, uh, for the city traffic department? Is it working for the people of the city of Kirkland? Um, and the fact that we haven't built any of these, um, uh, physical interventions, it's for almost 20 years, um, is a sort of an interesting, uh, piece of data. Um, so generally, I agree with this. I, uh, I like that, um, Joel, I think you used the term safe systems approach. I like that we're talking about a safe systems approach. I like that we're talking about a data-driven decision-making, um, engineer design by traffic engineers who are professionals in this area. Um, I like that there's still an opportunity for public input, but that it's sort of right-sized, uh, for, and right-typed, I guess, right-scoped for, uh, the issue at hand. These are, uh, we're all experts on transportation. Uh, the Dunning Kruger effect is always at its peak, uh, when it comes to transportation design. Um, but it is highly technical. And so I do appreciate that we're getting input. We're going to, our engineers are going to be taking that input into consideration. Um, but at the end of the day, this is going to be a data-driven engineered design with safety at its, uh, as, as its focus. Um, I like that it increases the likelihood that we might actually implement some of these, uh, traffic calming measures and these physical interventions, uh, where it makes sense to do so. Um, and it's, you know, it's all focused on the stated goal the city has for, um, for greater safety on our streets, especially for our pedestrians and our bikers and whatnot. And so the last thing I would say, and I, I think, uh, Councilmember Pascal mentioned this too, but I'll just reiterate, um, I'd really like to, you know, I'd like us to revisit this in a few years, in three, four, or five years, and, um, measure its impact, then measure the impact of this change and whether, what we're seeing. So hopefully that'll just be a natural part of this, is that we'll, this council or a future council will hear back about what these changes have really meant, um, and whether we're getting the results we, uh, hoped. And if we're not getting the results we hoped, then we'll revisit it again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nixon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I've been on the council over, over 11 years now. And I will admit that I never knew that under the Neighborhood Safety Program, a small minority of nearby residents had an actual veto over traffic calming measures, um, which, as was just mentioned, there are designed decisions made by professionals based on industry best practices. It's not subjective. Um, and normally we think of 69 or 70% as not just a landslide, but a tidal wave, uh, overwhelming support. Um, you know, I suppose I have the excuse that I live in Kings Gate and we weren't even in the city yet at the time the program was previously discontinued. But, um, but it's still surprising to me. Um, and so I, I strongly support eliminating that veto, uh, so that decisions can be made on the basis of safety and on doing the greatest good for the greatest number of people. And I support the rest of the proposal as well.
Great. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, it's really interesting seeing where things go in 20 years, some blast from the past and that, some of the things you've dug up from the archives, Victoria, Janet Pruitt, who was a Norkirk, uh, my neighborhood's neighborhood chair for a while, and Tracy Burrows is the traffic coordinator at the time in that flair. Fun stuff. Uh, so I, I too support, uh, being more responsive and, and limiting this process so we can do more to respond to neighborhood traffic safety concerns. One thing I am concerned about, page 47 of the packet, uh, illuminated the requirement of talking to the neighborhood association. And while I support the direct outreach to a number of focused stakeholders that you outline, um, I, I do see the neighborhood associations as a very useful tool in getting the word out, even getting the word out to those focused stakeholders. Uh, so, uh, maybe if there is a step to notify those, not include them in that same level of direct outreach, but at least some notification to neighborhood associations and then school, PTSA organizations. If a project is along a safer route to school, I think that'd be two sources for input. If you were going to go and do that notification, you may need to extend the comment period. Right now, you've got it as two weeks. And if those organizations are meeting on a monthly basis, like to be able to incorporate, give them a chance to get the word out so that you are, um, able to get some public comment. Thank you.
Any further comment? Good work, you two. Um, it, it is 20 years later. So, uh, well done. Uh, and we will see you later. With that, we're going to break and go into executive session. We will return at 7:30.
We are back in session following a study session on both the Lake Street South and Lake Washington Boulevard promenade and a concept development study and on neighborhood traffic control program policy. This takes us to item number four, which is honors and proclamations. We start with a proclamation, the Black History Month proclamation. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we will be declaring February as Black History Month in the city of Kirkland for all the many reasons that are articulated in the proclamation. I just wanted to add a few things. This proclamation was updated this year by Erica Moscoro, who is our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging manager. She wanted to be here tonight, but she is ill. A couple of things that she did in this proclamation is she included some wonderful links to resources where people learn more about Black history and also included some updates with our new Equity Roadmap and also some of the training that the city is doing in the area of Black history. And finally, one of the things that she intended to say was that, you know, as other communities across the country are actually discussing banning the discussion of Black history or the teaching of Black history, it's more important than ever that we, as a community, can celebrate Black history here in Kirkland. So in receiving the proclamation will be Aldi Garrett, as a Kirkland resident and the president and CEO of Tabor 100, as well as the president and CEO of our own company, Payments Management Technology Solutions.
And joining me to present the proclamation is Councilmember Neil Black. And if you'll just come forward.
Tonight, I'll be reading a proclamation of the city of Kirkland recognizing February 2023 as Black History Month in Kirkland. Whereas Negro History Week was founded in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted American historian, author, journalist, and son of enslaved people of African descent. And whereas to encourage the study of Black history and preserve and honor that legacy, Dr. Woodson selected the second week of February for this observance. And whereas this time of celebration and reflection was broadened to Black History Month at Kent State University in February of 1970 and nationally recognized in 1976 by President Gerald Ford during the United States Bicentennial. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the extraordinary achievements and contributions made by Black people to the social, artistic, cultural, political, economic, spiritual, and national advancement in the United States and beyond. And whereas to learn is our strongest tool against injustice, and it is our responsibility to prepare and empower every child in America, regardless of skin color, to learn the full and complete history of our nation. And whereas to understand racism and its impact to our social views and systems, we must know Black history, as Black history is an integral part of the United States history. And whereas to highlight the histories of local Black leaders, the city will commemorate the countless contributions to our region, our nation, and the world on social media platforms and to educate city staff, the city will hold staff training to build internal, personal, and interpersonal capacity to engage in conversations about racism by cultivating racial healing practices on February 25th, furthering Objective 7.3 of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Roadmap. And whereas to learn more about the exceptional contributions of Black Americans, Kirkland residents, students, and businesses may visit the National Museum of African American History and Culture website, which has virtual exhibitions, online collections, and an active blog of stories and articles. And whereas although we inherit incredible progress secured at the expense of centuries of toil, blood, sweat, and tears, we acknowledge that the long history toward justice is a difficult one to navigate, and we must forever support changemakers, become active participants in the liberation of all people, and demand that leaders everywhere be held accountable. And whereas the city council has worked to demonstrate a deliberate and intentional effort centering the experiences and perspectives of Black people through the adoption of Resolution 5434, ensuring the safe and, sorry, the safety and respect of Black people, and Resolution 5548, approval of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Roadmap, while Resolution 5240, declaring Kirkland a safe, inclusive, and welcoming city, supports the same intentional effort at ensuring the general well-being, inclusion, and belonging of Black people and all people in Kirkland. Now therefore, Mayor Penny Sweet, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in Kirkland and asks all community members, public officials, librarians, and educators to join us in commemorating the countless contributions of Black people to our region, our nation, and the world, as well as facing the reality of structural and institutional racism in our community. We encourage all Kirkland community members to join in conversation, both this month and every day. By coming together, we can create the beloved community envisioned by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you. Your proclamation pretty much covered it all, being a Kirkland resident since 1993 and feeling like walking down the street, I'm the only Black person in Kirkland and seeing the progress and in meeting with differently people here and seeing that you're holding true to everything that we've discussed. It's an honor to have Kirkland recognizing Black History Month. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We are back now, and we are at communications on our agenda. I took the glasses off. Here we go. This is the time in our meeting when we hear from the public on matters which are not scheduled for a quasi judicial or other public hearing. We will be considering the Caroline Point Apartments Master Plan Amendment later tonight for possible action. While that matter is quasi judicial, the public hearing on that matter is closed. We have no other public hearings scheduled for this evening. Please limit your comments on all matters to three minutes. We ask that not more than three people speak on any one subject. However, if both proponents and opponents wish to speak, then up to three proponents and up to three opponents may address the council. If you are present either in person or virtually and would like to address the council during this Items From the Audience period, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or in person using the posted QR code. For those participating by phone, please dial star nine to be recognized to speak. Community members will be called upon in order in which they signed up. Items from the audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We ask that you please do not clap or applaud after a speaker or that you express your disagreement with a speaker. We want everyone in Kirkland to feel welcome, expressing their viewpoints regardless of content. City Clerk, who we got lined up?
Our first two speakers are virtual, and the first one is Emily Betancourt, followed by Corey Walters. After that will be Mason Burns.
Thank you. Ms. Betancourt?
Hi. Thank you for having me and letting me speak today. I would like to discuss the Lake Washington Boulevard plans that you guys have. I wanted to first start off by saying thank you guys so much for improving and how, and putting forward really detailed plans to improve the safety of Lake Washington Boulevard for cyclists and pedestrians. I'm here today because I, I love to cycle along that route. I use it for commuting as well as just recreational cycling use. And I think that your plan is currently missing a really important intersection, and that intersection is the Lake Boulevard and Lakeview, specifically when you're going north, and the bike lane has to cross the Lakeview Drive right turn lane. Recently, I almost got hit by a car there while I was on my bike, and it was a very jarring experience. And I think that if the goal of Kirkland is to improve and really invest in improving Lake Washington Boulevard, I think to forget this key intersection that you have to take to get there, especially from the 520 trail, would be a huge mess and kind of undermine the entire goal of the project. And so I guess my ask for today is to consider either adding a redesign of the Lakeview/Washington like intersection or add it to a separate project, because I think that the design itself of the intersection is the problem and that it allows for accidents to happen. And yeah, basically gives very little ability for the drivers to give the bikes the right-of-way. I also wanted to point out, the signage that does say that bikes have the right-of-way is often covered by leaves. So if we could even, at the very least, get the bushes cut back so that signage is more clear, I think could be even a small improvement to help prevent accidents, such as the one that I was almost involved in. So that's all I had to say today, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Betancourt.
Next speaker is Corey Walters, also virtual, followed by Mason Burns.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Walters, welcome.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor and Kirkland City Council. I'm Corey Walters and would just like to take a minute and introduce myself. I'm the new executive director with the Kirkland Parks and Community Foundation, and it's such a treat to have the opportunity to work for the foundation and the awesome board that has been around for about eight years together, making really great things happen in the city of Kirkland. And to be in Kirkland and to get to know the city, and I've had an opportunity to meet with a couple of city council members and had really great discussions about what's happening in Kirkland and what the future of Kirkland might look like, and just really grateful to be here. And the whole Kirkland Parks and Community Foundation organization wanted to send out thank you to city council and to the city for supporting us through our capacity building campaign. And we wouldn't have an executive director today if, if we didn't have all the community's support that we've received in the last couple of years. So thank you so much for that. As the foundation grows and changes and starts incorporating new fundraising and grant providing opportunities to our local nonprofits, we look forward to building a deeper connection with the city and the council and, and our entire community. So, thank you, and I don't really have much more to say than that, other than I'm excited to be here. I look forward to meeting with all of you one-on-one at some point in time in the near future.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. We look forward to that as well.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is in the chamber, Mason Burns, followed by Scott Brady and Alex Zimmerman.
Welcome, Ms. Burns.
And I had a PowerPoint that went along with mine as well.
Hello, my name is Mason. I've been a Kirkland resident for 26 years. Over the past few months, myself and other folks I've met through the Snyder's Corner Dog Park have been sharing about the gift of connection and community and what we've found with one another through the pop-up dog park. While we recognize that the newness comes with some adjustments, today we just wanted to make sure that we expressed our gratitude to the city parks department, city council, and the city as a whole for returning the park. We know that building bridges and larger connections takes breath, lots of listening, kindness, and patience, as we find strategies and solutions that support everyone's needs. And we have our sleeves rolled up to do this work. We asked our dogs how they felt about the support and their feelings, and they were overwhelmingly positive, so we wanted to share some of their thoughts with you. We didn't bring them in, but I brought some pictures to just kind of go through.
Nice doggy.
So these were all taken just within the past couple of days as well. So it's definitely getting its fair share of use. Just again, we wanted to thank you for bringing a place to South Kirkland where we can gather, and our dogs can calculate how many balls they can fit in their mouths, how many dogs are required to carry one large stick, and to take a power nap in the middle of the park. We are all grateful for the connections that you have all created for both the dogs and the people of Kirkland. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Brady, followed by Alex Zimmerman, then Noel Nappett and Wendy Stewart.
Welcome, Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Really privileged to see you all face to face, and I'd want to say that, for once, I'm not here to talk about my nuisance-burning neighbor. Thank you for all the work you've done on that. It's coming along very nicely. I'm here instead to speak tonight about some ongoing traffic issues where I have concerns. It could be an issue where I'm simply uneducated, or it could be an issue where I'm just too old. The average age of our residents here in the city of Kirkland is apparently, as of right now, 37.4 years, which means that the age of all the roads in the city of Kirkland is about twice to three times the age of the average resident, which is great, because it means that we've done a pretty good job, even after annexation, coming up with ways to maintain those roads. I will say, however, that the way that we're approaching speeding and traffic calming is not what I would consider to be the best, and again, could come down to individual education. Where I have to go with this, unfortunately, is when I see comments like this, and I'm going to read this aloud, because it was a bit strange to me, and it was in response to someone saying that they felt like their neighbors were speeding. The comment reads, "There are many studies that show the biggest offenders of speeding are your neighbors. Like you, I also work extra hard to watch my speeds through neighborhoods. I wish everyone did. However, many of our streets were built extra wide, and many people don't realize how fast they're going." A comment like that is not necessarily a bad thing. You might wonder, well, what kind of person might write that? Person sitting among you. It's not a bad thing that they have their opinion, but I will say it's a bit strange that someone could have an opinion like that, knowing that the roads might not be too wide as they are, as they have been around for, say, 50, or 60, or 70, or 80, or 90 years. What's changed to make our roads less safe is driver behavior, and what drives driver behavior, quite frankly, is enforcement of law. There's no doubt in my mind, and I think in the minds of many, that when you say to an individual, "You will get a ticket for that burnt-out headlight. You will get a ticket for that burnt-out taillight." A policeman will pull you over, you'll be issued a citation, it'll make your everything more expensive for you. You will be motivated by the sound of your neighbor screeching at the top of their lungs at the mailbox about that ticket. You'll go out and fix your car. It's like the same with speeding, with running stop signs. I've seen stop signs being put in places where, just yesterday, I almost got T-boned by the same people running the stop sign before that stop sign got put in, in opposite directions. I get slowed down by new stoplights and revisions that are put in. It's not great. And I see buses and emergency vehicles and large trucks. I own a pickup truck myself, I have this problem where my mirrors are over the lines. But I see larger vehicles like buses driving with a white line down the center when I go to places, other cities, that have also narrowed the roads too much and have approached traffic calming in ways that don't make sense, too many odd dogs and things like that.
Mr. Brady, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time.
If you would like to, please feel free to send your comments in writing.
Will do. Thank you, Mayor.
Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman, followed by Noel Nappett and Wendy Stewart.
Welcome, Mr. Zimmerman.
Zihail, where is timer?
In front of you.
Here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Zihail, majority of them Nazi Gestapo democracy fascist, a crook, mafia, and psychopath. My name, Alex Zimmerman, and I, president of Stand Up America, and I try go for election. Yeah, again, yeah. Guys, can you stop and acting like a critina? My question very simple. I cannot see this for very long time. Somebody sit in toilet, have a pleasure, have telephone, have a pleasure speak this, you know what it mean? And everybody happy? I'm not happy. I drive, I spend time, I'm here with dozen people if we have something second-class citizen. What is be as this? This number one. Number two, I want to speak about housing. Last time you don't give me this chance, so right now I have two minute for speak for my housing. Guys, you are a criminal, you are a bandida, and you are a killer. And I explain to you why. And I explain to you why. For many years, we don't fix this problem. For many years, we have control by Democrat mafia. In Seattle, in Kirkland, in King County, in state Washington. Why? I have my website, alexforamerica.com. And many year ago, I bring very simple question, you know what it mean? How we can fix this problem? It's very easy. And nobody doing this, why? My proposition's simple, you know what it mean? And you have very good example from Section 8, you know what it mean? Because my mom in Section A for many year, I know this business like my five finger. Fifty percentage people who make less than $50,000 post to be half, same rules like half Section 8, pay 30 percentage as standard American. Where is the problem? Why we need spend for sound transistors, $100 billion? It cannot bring 250,000 people who in totally deep hole right now with housing. And everybody happy? How you can be happy? I'm not happy. Who's freaking idiot who cannot make simple decision? I leave this story five year. Here country have good rules before, but for last 20 year, you totally disappear everything because by definition you are bandida. You understand what is I talking about? Is this very important? This very simple, last time you make this decision, stupid rules are pure masturbation. Probably nobody know how working, but this look good for you. You're doing something for the people, you don't doing nothing. This is exactly what's happened. Fifty percentage people who make less than $50,000 post to believe in normal situation, 30 percentage, that's it. Is this not too much need money for support them?
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Oh, red?
Yep.
I don't like red color, thank you very much.
Our next speaker stepped out for a moment, so our next speaker will be Wendy Stewart, and she is virtual.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, Ms. Stewart.
Hi, I very much apologize. I signed up last week, actually, when you gave us the Snyder's Corner Dog Park, um, speak and listen session because I wanted to thank you. So I apologize that I came through to the city council meeting, but I think Mason did a fantastic job of thanking you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noel Nappett, and I'm not sure if he's back in. Is this Noel? Hi, Noel. Step right up to the podium.
Mayor, introduce myself, my name's Noel Nappett. I moved here in 1967. Went to Lakeview Elementary School, Kirkland Junior High, Lake Washington High School, Washington State University. I live in Houghton, I live three doors down from Mr. Bob Neer. And I live a mile and a half from the home I grew up on the lake. And I've got a lot of stuff going on with my head right now, and I'm very anxious. And I'm not, um, my, my, my demeanor right now isn't my normal demeanor. Um, I'm actually a really nice guy, but really, really upset with what's going on in our town here in Kirkland. Okay, there's, I just, I need more than three minutes, but I know I got three minutes. So it's just, I met with Kurt and, uh, some stuff that he informed me of was just not true. But let's start with, from the beginning, let's go from the biggest concerns of mine is the traffic impact and the road improvements. Let me give you an example. Uh, watching the news the last couple nights, um, um, uh, the town out there in South, where they put the airport, they said, no, we, I can't think of it right now, excuse me. Um, they said, no, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the road improvements. So what you guys are doing here is you're building all these buildings here with no road improvements, no tenant improvements. Give you a couple of examples, northeast, uh, Kirkland, the urban center. You put a right-hand turn lane in there, oh, oh, it comes back a year later. Uh, the right-hand turn lanes need to go in early, okay? And the builders and the contractors and the developers needs to improve the roads. And if you want to build a five-story building up on Rose Hill, or the bowling alley, or the Old Waldo's Tavern, the Petco, let's put some right-hand turns in. Talk to Kurt on 132nd Northeast 85th where the churches are. Um, oh, there's going to be a right-hand turn lane going, going, uh, west on Northeast 85th? Not, no, there is not. And I've been living here for a long time. That intersection right there has always been an issue, even with the churches, we used to be more impactful. They don't have quite the, um, uh, the, the, uh, the people going there. But we wait 15 minutes to get through that intersection on a Sunday morning. And then Kurt informs me that the engineer, I got my notes here, I'm not going to get in details, doesn't think there was a need for having a right-hand turn lane. So there are several buildings going up here that, uh, need to have right-hand turn lanes. You need to halt the developers and say, no, we need to, we're changing our plan. We need to make some infrastructure and some road improvements on these roads because there's a lot of traffic impact. Okay, so I live in Houghton, and I go, it takes me, I go 1.1 miles to downtown Kirkland. I leave at 4:30, it takes me 22 minutes to get there. You go up to my intersection on Northeast 70th by the Metropolitan Market.
Thank you, Mr. Nappett, I'm sorry, your time is up.
It's ridiculous.
That is the last speaker that we have signed up.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else out there who has not addressed the council yet, yet would like to? Seeing none, I declare this items from the audience period closed.
Can I hear you? Can I hear you?
Um. Okay, so that takes us to the next section, which is special presentations, the Houghton Village Near-Term Strategy. City manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this, uh, special presentation is to provide some background on, um, some options we want to discuss with the city council about near-term uses of Houghton Village, and particularly the, uh, former PCC site. I'm here to walk you through that presentation, those options, is Beth Goldberg, our Deputy City Manager for Operations.
Good evening, everyone, and we'll see if I can figure out how to get this to work. Okay. Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and council members. I am here tonight to, uh, present some options for near-term strategies for, um, for the PCC space at the, at Houghton Village. So, uh, you all will recall that, uh, we purchased the Houghton Village Shopping Center in, um, May of 2022 with, uh, the goal of redeveloping the property. Um, long-term goal of redeveloping the property into mixed-use affordable housing. Um, but the short-term goal, um, until it takes, until we're ready to do that redevelopment, was to find a way to activate, um, the, the, the site with the former PCC space, um, because it has reduced, uh, foot traffic, um, to, to the shopping center. And the, the idea had been to find a community arts nonprofit that could provide community benefits to occupy the space. Uh, so that was the vision. Um, and the challenge that we have identified since then is that the cost and timeline to complete the upgrades are more significant than, uh, we had anticipated. Uh, the condition of the space is, um, uh, needs attention. And, um, all of this requires a change of use, um, that ratchets up. Should I pause here maybe? Or do you want me to keep going?
No, I think you should.
Keep going, okay. Um, so, sorry. Um, so, uh, in all of these, uh, many of these changes that I'm going to talk about here tonight require a change of use which triggers, um, code, uh, upgrades to the facility. So, uh, to ground everyone of what the inside of, um, the former PCC space looks like, um, here are a few pictures. Um, you can, uh, see where the shell, the store shelves used to be. And, um, there are parts of the floor that, um, that need attention, the walls need attention, things of that nature. So we considered, uh, five options, um, as we, we had this, this long-term goal in mind. And, um, the main underlying issue is that the building is currently designated as mercantile use. And if you kept it as a mercantile, um, property, it would not trigger, um, additional code requirements, but it would cause, um, or it would require some, um, uh, TLC to address the floor images that you saw, the, the walls, things of that nature. So preliminary estimates, although we do think there are opportunities to bring the cost down, if we wanted to retain the space as mercantile use, would be as much as $300,000. Um, the, the, uh, challenge with this option is that we don't have, um, a tenant currently identified. So we know we want to activate the space, but, um, to activate the space, you need to create a suitable shell for someone to move into that costs money. But in this case, we might find a tenant, but we, we might not. Um, the other option we looked at is, do you change the use from mercantile to business use? This would trigger more, um, more upgrade, uh, requirements that could cost as much as $750,000. Again, there may be opportunity to spring this down, but that's, that's the early assessment. And the type of, um, establishments that could then go into the space would be, um, professional office space, um, some, uh, potentially some educational or ambulatory care facilities. As, um, is the case with the mercantile use, we don't, as of now, have, um, a tenant lined up. The third option, um, is to change the use from mercantile to assembly use. Um, and that would, that would be the usage that would be required to accommodate, uh, a, a nonprofit as we had, had set out, um, as the goal when we purchased the property. Um, this requires, um, more extensive, um, upgrades to the building, namely because there's more bathroom requirements that need to be met. So the cost for option three is about $850,000. Uh, this option, as opposed to the other options, we do have, um, a potential tenant, um, uh, or tenants, um, that, that we believe may be interested in occupying the space if we made these upgrades. One other thing that I should point out in all of this is that the upgrades that I'm describing here would be to create a usable shell. The, the tenant that is actually going in, regardless of, of the category, would like to, likely need to make additional tenant improvements to, um, customize the space for, um, their particular, their particular needs. So the other two options that we considered is, um, to leave the spaces is, this would be the least expensive option, uh, because it would not require any upgrades. But it does also mean that the space would likely remain vacant because of, um, the images that you saw earlier in the presentation. And this would result in continued, um, reduced foot traffic to the area that is, is cause for concern of the businesses that remain there. Um, so, um, that, that would be the downside of this option. And then the fifth option, um, that we're offering up today, although this requires probably more research than all of the options, um, we've previously discussed, would be to demolish the PCC portion of, of the property and identify a, an open space use for, for the vacant space that would remain after the, the building was demolished, the PCC portion of the building was demolished. Um, the, the advantage of this, this option, um, would be that, at the time that we redevelop the property, we're going to have to demolish the buildings anyway, so this would be getting a leg up. But, um, as with option four, probably not doing a lot to help, um, with, with the foot traffic that is desired for, uh, the space. Um, in terms of financial considerations, um, there's really a, a bit of a push-pull here with, um, the, knowing the cost to make the upgrades necessary to get, get a tenant into the space versus the investment, and how do we, how do we pay for that? So, um, we have identified a couple of, um, initial funding sources that we could choose to deploy if, if that was the council's direction. Uh, first is that the biennial budget did include $250,000 for Houghton Village costs related to, you know, unexpected repairs that might come up, such as, you know, portions of the roof need to be replaced, or HVAC system needs to be addressed. So there is that $250,000 that is already appropriated for, for Houghton Village. Uh, the downside of drawing upon that now is if something unexpected happens to the building, then we would need, we would need to find another funding source to address those. We could also look at REIT reserves, but, um, there's also many, many ideas for those REIT reserves. And given what's going on with the real estate market, um, REIT levels are, are, um, maybe not going to be as robust, um, this year as they might be in the future. So that's one option. Um, the other option is, we estimate collecting 366,000, or, excuse me, 366,000 in unallocated rent revenues, um, through mid-2025. So right now, we've got the tenants on two-year, two-plus-year leases, um, which would have them remain until June 2025, which is the earliest we would anticipate redeveloping the property. That, uh, lease revenue is not currently designated for any purpose, so we could, we could direct it towards, uh, the costs of the upgrades. Um, and then the, the, the last option that we have for you here today would be to deploy future lease revenues if we were able to get a tenant into the PCC space. Um, this is speculative, um, because two of the options, we don't necessarily have tenants lined up. The third option, which would be the assembly use for a, a nonprofit organization, would likely not be paying market rate, uh, rents. So what we've cited here is an amount that the city could collect if we were able to identify, um, a new occupant that was paying roughly market or close to market rates. And that would be about 168 to 216,000 per year. Um, but as I said, this could be substantially less. If we go, uh, the nonprofit route and the assembly usage, which is the most expensive upgrades, it is likely that the occupant would not be, would be paying well below market rate rent. Um, the city's practice has been just to charge O and M, not, not rent. Um, but that's something that we could, we could reexamine, um, as we're weighing, as we're weighing these different options. So, um, to, uh, to summarize, um, we've laid out, um, five options for you. Uh, we are looking for direction on council's preferred option. Um, as we weigh these, these various, um, options, staff does recommend that we, um, proceed with doing further analysis of option three and returning to the council in March with a proposal. And that further analysis would include, um, uh, collecting more information on, um, the estimated costs of the upgrades. Again, preliminary estimates are $850,000, but we think we could bring that down. Um, also do some further exploration of whether, in fact, we could get a tenant in there as we anticipate and what that tenant, um, may be able to pay, um, in terms of rent and how that might, um, offset the upgrade costs. And so our recommendation is, if, if the council agrees, would be to do some more work, dig into option three a little bit more, return in March with a proposal for, um, for you all to consider. So with that, can open it up for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, Councilmember Nixon?
Thank you, Beth. So when we entered into this transaction, I, I believe our intent was that the rental income would cover at least the interest on the interfund loan. And is that happening? And is that happening? Like, when you talk about the $366,000 as being net, is that net of that interest or is that interest coming out of that $366,000?
My recollection of the discussion of when the purchase was approved was that we were going to identify a partner to help redevelop the property and develop a long-term financing plan that would defees the loan as well as the interest. We did suggest that the rent could be used to offset some of that. I don't recall that we said it would definitively cover those costs, but it was a tool that we mentioned. So of course, if we used this rent revenue that I cited previously, it would not be available to defees those costs. But we would be fairly confident that a developer could, if we identified the developer to redevelop the property, that they would be able to cover that as well as helping come up with a financing plan to pay off the entire loan.
So when you say the $366,000 is net, you mean net above operating and maintenance costs?
Correct.
Okay, not the interest. Thank you. So I grew up in Northern California, and in our area, there were a lot of what we called flea markets. Anybody ever been to a flea market?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You know, it would be kind of just an ongoing operation where you had tables or booths for arts and crafts. My dad used to go out to garage sales at the end of the day and buy up the boxes of leftover stuff for a quarter and then take it to the flea market and sell at the flea market for a quarter for each item, right? It was quite a scheme. And, you know, I think there's a lot of people in the community that might enjoy having something like that. If we wanted to do something like that, kind of an ongoing arts crafts, would that fit within the existing zoning, the mercantile?
It would. That, we believe, a flea market, a farmer's market, we believe would fit within the mercantile usage, the current mercantile usage. So that $300,000-ish investment that I described would be the path. What is not known, and I've got our property manager researching this, is how much rent, you know, is market rate something that a farmer's market, a flea market, may be willing to pay? Because I don't know, I guess I'm a little skeptical that something like that would be able to pay what, you know, a retail, a grocery store might be willing to pay.
No. So I'm thinking of something that would be an interim temporary use while we tried to get a market rate tenant.
Okay.
But, I mean, I see our short-term desire is just to get more people coming there to patronize the businesses that surround it. And to me, this seems like at least one idea that could be set up pretty quickly, you know, assuming we worked out the insurance liability issues and all those other things. To me, I would not even consider the option of demolishing the building prematurely if we had even this kind of simple benefit to the community that we could have. So I'll say I'm supportive of, at the very least, doing option one. Just make the building functional, fix the bathrooms, deal with the flooring, HVAC updates, you know, if it's just to make it functional, at least during the winter. And let's figure out something we can do that benefits the community, even if it's not a huge moneymaker. Because my recollection is, we didn't really expect to make a lot of money off this. We hoped to break even. But I'm also open to looking at option three. I would really like to see what the cost would be to make it into an assembly space for one of our performing arts nonprofits or something like that. And also, not only what the cost would be, but what the funding options would be. So I'm very supportive of going ahead with those explorations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curtis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While we're sharing, Councilmember Nixon, I'd take this space and turn it into a nursery. I'm going to quit city council and I'm going to start a business. No, that would be a dream of mine. So I also don't want to see this property vacant, especially over the next two years. So we need to invest in the upgrades to make sure that we add value to the community. But what I'm not clear, I need more information. So I'm looking for when you come back in March, not only, all these things are in my head. We don't know what the construction costs will be on each of the three options, because I'm assuming the construction cost and the timeline will vary based on the options. The estimate you threw out was six to 18 months, but I would assume option one would be a shorter timeframe than option three. So the question is, what's the timeline on each option? What can we rent each option for? And then also, when we look at the timeline, you know, we talked about, we talk about that we want someone in this property 2025, but realistically, it's not going to happen in 2000. It will be a miracle in that we have to do a master plan process, which requires a public hearing, which goes through design review board and so forth. So I'd like to see this spread out over what's, someone is going to rent this based on how long they think they're going to be there. So we need to be realistic with the future occupant on if it's a two-year timeframe or a four-year timeframe. So I need all of that information before I can make a recommendation. Right now, I'm leaning toward option three, because I believe that will give us the highest rate of return, but I'd like to know what we would be charging for rent and what would it cost us to do the contracting. Option five was unexpected and intrigues me because we're always looking for parks' open space. So is the property in the kind of condition, if we were to demo the building, to put pickleball courts or tennis courts or a skate park? So I would like to hear from Parks and Community Services how we could activate this space, and that might be also beneficial for the community and the residents. So I need more information before I can make a recommendation. And then, you know, it's too early to start talking about the master plan process, but that's also what we need to start thinking about when we do this. We did receive an email from a neighbor in the Houghton area talking about the Sixth Street corridor study and the HNC. So when we do this master plan process, is it just for this property or are we required to do the master plan process for the whole HNC? Because when we went through that process, we talked about curb cuts and driveway conflicts. And so there's a lot of unknowns and complications, and we need to answer some of those questions before I can make a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Arnold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with parts of what Councilmember Curtis has said and Councilmember Nixon has said about wanting to move to help use the site now to help support the neighborhood center and to build foot traffic and continue to support the neighborhood businesses there. But I also want the use that we do in the near term to reflect where we're going with the master plan over the long term. I think that we have, we're back up. We talked a little bit about the retreat, about visions of wanting to build housing on the site and also support community nonprofits, and talked about things like the Together Center for Inredmond as a model. Having nonprofits anchoring Houghton Village this year provides an illustration of that model for the community and future development partners as we think about a master plan and our vision and that redevelopment. If we go off in a different direction, like you were suggesting, Councilmember Curtis, with open space or recreation space, then we're changing that over the long term, and I'd rather go in the same strategic direction. So I'm willing to support the investment in option three to bring standards to an assembly use, if we could work out the details with potential tenants. And I know there's a lot of complicated moving parts here, but would like to see if we can get to a point where we think we know those details of what that would look like, the timing, the cost, and the options to finance it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I still have, like the other colleagues, just some more questions. So just a couple ones, just to clarify, Beth. So are we working with an outside commercial broker on advertising the property and talking about potential tenants?
Yes. So we have a property manager under contract that is managing the property for us, current tenants, and also looking for additional tenants. Just recently had success. Another vacant portion of the building was Suite D in the western building, and the property manager was successful in identifying and getting a new tenant into that space, a martial arts outfit into Suite D. There have been periodic inquiries on this space, but nothing as of yet particularly serious.
Okay, that clears. I didn't understand whether or not the property manager was kind of internal to the city or was an external.
External.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'd just say that, I mean, what concerns me is putting more money towards this, that, you know, is money that's for a short-term fix, right? Doesn't necessarily get to the long-term investment that we want to see. But I think what would be most helpful for me is to kind of see the timeline, like an illustration of when you actually kind of got a permit to go and make the investments, to when a tenant would be there, come in, how long they'd be there for, then when, you know, and then how the planning and the master planning would kind of coincide with that, just to kind of get a better sense of how it would all work out and see it visually, I think would be helpful. You know, I'm interested in understanding other ways to activate the space. I just, it's hard to kind of go along with the $850,000 and know that that's maybe money that's only been used for two years or so, and there's probably lots of other ways we could use that money for the benefit of the community. That's what I'm struggling with. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to add to what my colleagues have already said. I did, I guess it's worth saying perhaps that, you know, I don't see a big difference between, for example, I think the reason we're not really talking about option two is it's difficult to imagine spending $750,000 or something in that neighborhood and not spending another $100,000 on a potential solution that, you know, could introduce a likely tenant. I liked what Deputy Mayor Arnold was saying about sort of maintaining a strategic direction. I also liked what Councilmember Nixon said about, not to put words in anyone's mouth, but that we don't really need to make money on this near-term stage. I think just activating the space and which will help support the businesses that are located there who are, right now, the city's tenants. And so, you know, we really, just that benefit alone is sort of an intangible benefit that you can't really quantify on the bottom line of a spreadsheet, but that alone is meaningful to me. And then, of course, if we can get community benefit, then that's also extremely meaningful. One, I guess, detailed question. When I look at that property and I think about it in near term, and I think about some of the, we do have a large employer nearby. I don't know how, speaking of activated, I don't know how activated their space is right now with employees every day, but there are a pretty healthy number of employees. I was thinking about activating that space in ways related around food, and that got me thinking about food truck malls and thinking about sort of a miniature version of that. And would that be compatible? And then I got to thinking about whether that would be compatible with some of these, it doesn't have to be exclusively identified as a food truck mall, but that could be part of a near-term solution. It could be, I can kind of envision two or three or four food truck stalls along with the nonprofit cultural arts uses. I have no idea whether food trucks make money for the landowners who permit them. I suspect it's not much of a moneymaker, but I'd be curious to hear more about that. And so I guess to sort of strike the same note that a lot of my council members, and I think the staff's aware of this, you know, there's just a lot more analysis that needs to be done and we need more information, but I think staff agrees. But I definitely think it's, you know, I came into this discussion with thinking, three, only if there's some real likelihood that we could really activate the space in a way that's really beneficial to the community. It doesn't have to necessarily make money, but it could break even and be a great benefit to the community and the business owners there who are tenants. But otherwise, probably, you know, looking at a much smaller investment. But what I don't want, I think Councilmember Curtis says, that what I don't want is an empty space. And I'm guessing that's consensus view by everyone on the council and in the staff, that we don't want to see the space not activated in some manner. So thanks. That's really all I had to say.
Can I ask a question about, when you say break even?
Oh.
Is it break even with the cost of the investment to upgrade the space? Or is it cost to operate and maintain the space? And I'm asking the question because the investment that we estimate currently, and again, we hope to bring it down, for the assembly use would be $850,000. And if you assume a two-year horizon, which, you know, may be extended, maybe not, but conservatively two years, that would be more than the market rate, which a nonprofit, so that would be, and don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but that would be, you know, that's something that staff is thinking about and I'm sure will be, when we come back with more numbers, something that you all will want to dig into. So I guess it's a question, but also planting a seed to a certain extent?
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's great. I think when I was talking about break even, I was really focused on if we made some of the space available to food trucks, cost of electrical hookup, cost of additional insurance, just really whether it makes, whether food trucks are willing to pay for permitted parking sufficient to cover our costs, or just incrementally additional cost of allowing them to be on the property. That's really what I was talking about there, nothing related to covering the cost of the capital investment.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I just think we threw a whole bowl of spaghetti on a wall. And there are noodles everywhere. So I'm not going to add a whole lot. I agree with, I think, some of the heart of what I'm hearing my fellow council members say, the nursery is the best idea out there, but, because, boy, I tell nurses to go crazy with people. Anyway, activate it. Let's get clear on what the costs are going to be and what it's going to take. And we don't have to rush this conversation, but I think we just need more information before we move forward with it. And with that, thank you very much. Do you have anything else you need?
No, I just, you might find this interesting. So Michael Olson, our finance director, texted me from the good old days, the interest payment we make is at 1.1%, and it'd be $474,000 approximately, due at the end of the third year, so. But no, otherwise, thank you for the conversation.
All right, great. And thank you, Beth. With that, that takes us to item eight, our consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Arnold for an audit of the accounts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $5,200,000. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $5,271,240.72, and bills in the amount of $13,88,125.23. The bills include our annual $3.14 million payment to WCIA for insurance, also coming at the same time as some monthly utility, NORCOM, and capital project construction invoices.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Black.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Curtis. Any discussion? Question is on the motion to approve the consent calendar, moved by Councilmember Black, seconded by Councilmember Curtis. All those in favor, okay, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Takes us to our business agenda, item number nine. The first item of business is the Caroline Point Apartments Master Plan Amendment. This matter is a quasi-judicial matter, but the public hearing on this matter was closed at our last meeting. Before considering possible action on this matter, though, is there any member of the council who wishes to share any potential conflict of interest or appearance of fairness concerns? Seeing head nods. Okay. I will call on the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to make the presentation before your potential decision is our Planning Supervisor Nick Salufo and Associate Planner Jennifer Anderer.
Hi, Nick. Jennifer.
Hello. Let me share my screen. It says, it won't let me, it's still being shared from the previous presentation.
Sorry, we'll fix that.
No problem.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, one second. Okay. Can you see the intro slide of the PowerPoint?
We got it.
Everyone can hear me? Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mary Sweet, Mayor Sweet, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and councilmembers. We are back tonight to discuss the Caroline Point Apartments Master Plan Amendment. I have five slides, should be less than 10 minutes. We'll just reintroduce the project and then briefly touch on the council's discussion topics from the January 3 meeting. There's also members from the applicant team that are on the call virtually tonight in case there's follow-up questions. So the Caroline Point Apartments are located at 5604 Lakeview Drive. It's just south of Northeast 58th Street, adjacent to the CKC. And this proposed amendment includes a 3,000-square-foot amenity building. There's two parking stalls, the ADA ramp, and then a variety of public amenities. And at the regular meeting on January 3, council generally supported the proposal, but did ask for additional information on several items that you can see listed here. And the applicant prepared a response memo and exhibit, which was included in the packet. They've revised portions of the first three items on here, on the list, and that's reflected in conditions of approval in the draft resolution. So starting with the public restroom, council wanted a little bit more information on the utility line location, looking into ways to streamline construction or incorporate the restroom into the design itself. And constructing the public restroom is not part of the applicant's proposal. And the location of the utilities will be identified when they prepare the construction drawings for the building permit. But since those exact lines aren't known, at this time, they are going to provide an easement for the city's use. And to reflect this, a condition of approval was added to that draft resolution that has the applicant will grant utility easements to the city for future use of a public restroom or public amenities within the CKC. And on this graphic here, the proposed restroom shown is simply a graphical representation of what could be. Certainly, if or when the city decides to construct a restroom amendment, this, or this amendment would grant that utility easement, and then they could run the utility lines to a location that they see fit. Council also asked the applicant to explore additional benches and bike racks within the CKC right of way for public use. The proposal includes replacement of a standard-sized memorial bench for Doreen Marchiani to a larger zigzag bench with more seating, and that bench actually incorporates four bike racks. But in response to council's comment, the applicant will be adding two additional bike stalls adjacent to an existing bench just north on the CKC. So this also is reflected through a second condition of approval for the applicant to provide those two additional bike stalls in a location near the project within the CKC. Council also identified that the proposed pet relief station was located essentially at the base of the stairs that lead to Northeast 55th Street and requested that it be moved south. The applicant has agreed to this, and the third condition of approval that was added will have the installation of the pet relief station south of an existing gravel pathway along the west side of the CKC in a location subject to approval by the city. Then for signage, council specifically was looking for directional signage to connect the CKC down to Lakeview Drive and then ultimately Lake Washington. And the applicant's clarified that their proposal does include two different pieces of signage. So the first is one that you see here. It's a small pedestal right next to that proposed zigzag bench. And then the second are four directional medallions that would be placed along that dashed pathway leading from the CKC to Lakeview Drive. And the design and content of all these pieces of signage would be subject to approval, not only with the Public Works Department, but also the City Manager's Office during the building permit process. Council asked if the applicant had considered a green roof, and they've confirmed that they did, but they ultimately decided that it wasn't feasible. It creates a higher structural load, there's irrigation challenges, and also maintenance challenges. So still wanting to incorporate greenery into the project, they opted to focus more heavily on ground vegetation, so the area surrounding the building, and then also near that zigzag bench that we talked about, which is much easier for long-term maintenance. Then council asked if the water bottle station would be for public use and if the applicant had considered adding a dog fountain. The water bottle station's not included in their public amenity package, and it's not intended for public use because it's located adjacent to the building, to the building's entrance, and it's within their private property. Then the last discussion topic was a final tree retention plan. The applicant is proposing to remove those three cottonwoods and then five Douglas fir trees that surround the proposed building. And part of the amendment application did include an arborist report, and the city's development review arborist took a preliminary look and determined that the cottonwoods do pose a risk for future structural issues, and then asked the applicant to provide more details through their construction drawings with the building permit for any potential development impacts for the fir trees. And once the applicant submits the construction drawings for their building permit, a final retention plan will be reviewed and approved, and that's subject to Chapter 95 of the zoning code. So council's decisional criteria for the amendment are consistency with the application, or, excuse me, consistency with the applicable development regulations, the comprehensive plan, and public health, safety, and welfare. And finally, here are the decision options for tonight. Considering the Hearing Examiner's recommendation, council may either grant the application as recommended, modify and grant the application, deny it, or remand the matter back to the Hearing Examiner for further review. Staff are recommending that council grant the application with those modifications to include the three conditions of approval in the draft resolution. So that covers those utility easements, the additional bike stalls, and also shifting the pet station, pet relief station, south on the CKC. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay. Do we want to put a motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Madam Mayor, I move Resolution R. 5570.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, seconded by Councilmember Black. Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Just briefly, because we've covered this over a couple of meetings in January, just for the public's benefit. When we say quasi-judicial, this means that we're evaluating whether this meets our code based on a recommendation from the Hearing Examiner. This is different than a master plan process where we have all sorts of latitude to require public benefit. This is already specified in code. This particular development is happening on private property. It doesn't encroach on the Cross Kirkland Corridor. Public views are protected by the heights of the structure and the location of the amenity building. Through this action, we think it's consistent with the requirements of an original master plan that was 30 years ago, and the staff presentation mentioned a number of public benefits that are not required by code, but we're getting as part of this. So in summary, I think it meets the criteria, and that we should approve it.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Question is on the motion to approve Resolution 5570, moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, seconded by Councilmember Black. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Resolution 5570 is approved. This takes us to item B, Special Events Program Updates. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is, we're hoping is our nearly final check-in on special events and special events policy. We're going to be providing an update on what we did from the last council meeting and final recommendations, and then we're looking for council direction to be brought back at a future meeting for final action. So I had to make that presentation is John Lloyd, our Parks and Community Services Deputy Director, as well as our Special Projects Coordinator, Sudhi L. Casey.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get the screen shared, and then we'll get going. Let me show the screen. Okay. Can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, City Manager Triplett. Good evening, Mayor Sweet, Deputy Mayor Arnold, and fellow councilmembers. Our present, presentation tonight has only 20 slides, and throughout the presentation, we will be seeking your feedback on possible code changes. So just to write a real high-level overview, then I'm going to kick it over to Sudhi. As you know, we've come to council on a variety of occasions, like Kirkland, and we're hoping this is near our final visit to you all. We've been discussing policies, fees, cost recovery, you name it, we've been talking about it with special events. We've got several proposed changes to the municipal code we'll talk about. Seek your feedback, like I said, and then we'll talk about the next steps. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Sudhi.
Good evening. As you know, staff have made several presentations to council related to special events over the past few years. Presentations started back in 2019 and have provided background on the permitting process and regulations, fees, community feedback, and possible changes to the KMC. Our community outreach efforts included several listening sessions with multiple stakeholders. We met with the city's diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging staff, along with Kirkland Police Department leaders, to discuss various policies and rules while researching benchmarking activities focused on state regulations and neighboring cities. While it's taken some time, these efforts have resulted in making progress towards revising the special event code and policies. Next slide, please.
So like I said, last, or last month, last October, we presented several recommended changes to the municipal code. As outlined in your memos, or in your memo, there were several policies that we had consensus on that we reached agreement on. Those areas are highlighted on the screen. For the sake of time, I don't want to dive into all of those, but I'm happy to answer any questions or refresh your memory about those changes. And so, real quickly, does anyone have any questions on any of these policies or previously discussed items? I can't see anybody if you're raising your hand, so I apologize.
Not seeing any, John.
Okay, perfect. That brings us to really the heart of the conversation tonight. The three main topics that we'll be discussing and seeking your feedback on are event limits, event scheduling and prioritization, and event fees. So like I said, we'll be spending a few minutes talking about each of these areas and our proposed changes and recommendations, at which time we'll seek your feedback. So feel free to ask questions as we go through the slides or along the way. And I'll, first up, I'm going to kick it over to Sudhi to talk about event limits.
All right. So the KMC currently allows up to two special events per month, per venue, or along any one street. There are exemptions for city council-designated community events and community programs, like the Wednesday Market, which do not count towards the limit. The two-permit limit was put in place back in 2013 to mitigate the impacts of events on downtown businesses and residents, while still maintaining a balance of events and the public's enjoyment of parks. Finding the right balance that meets everyone's needs is difficult. The feedback we've received over the past year is not universal. Some would like more events, while others want no events. So there's no perfect solution that will allow for more events to take place while reducing impacts to the community. At the October meeting, staff provided several options for council's consideration, but as we worked through the options, it led to more questions. Council's feedback at that time was to allow for more flexibility in the limits, which would allow for more culturally diverse events. Next slide, thank you. With those goals in mind, staff have two recommendations that will work in tandem with the proposed change to the event scheduling to get us to where we want to go. First, staff recommends separating Marina Park and the Central Business District into two standalone venues. While this will impact downtown businesses, it'll double the number of permits allowed in the downtown core each month without causing further impacts to the public's access to Marina Park. It also practically addresses event limits for the future of park lane. And second, John, jump in here if this is, if we need to clarify something here. Staff revised the previous recommendation to eliminate the community program event type. We believe the better solution is to revise existing code that exempts community programs from the special event permit requirement, and instead treat community programs like council-designated community events, which are required to get a permit but are not subject to the permit limitation. This change will allow staff to continue issuing one permit for the duration of the program while not counting against the two-permit limit. So with that, we'd like to ask for council's feedback on these two recommendations.
You okay with that? Looks like we're nodding, head nods, okay.
Great. All right. The next topic for discussion is event scheduling. In October, we discussed the current policy, which states dates and venues will be reserved on a first-come, first-served basis, not more than one year prior to the proposed event, and the actual practice of holding dates and venues to ensure that no conflicts, that there are no conflicts with other activities. The current policy isn't perfect. It leaves the door open to scheduling conflicts. For example, if a new event applied for a date early in the month, it could potentially bump an annual event normally held later in the month. Also, some members of council felt the practice of guaranteeing dates so far in advance makes it difficult for new events to get a venue. Staff's last two proposals for council consideration included, one, adhering to the existing first-come, first-served policy, which council did not support, and two, was to establish an alternate application window for weekend and multi-day events. However, after further consideration, staff believe this would add to an already complicated process for organizers. This change doesn't meet our goal to simplify and streamline the process, so staff no longer support this recommendation. At the October meeting, council did show interest in a change to the application window so that events could be evaluated and selected each year. Staff have prepared a two-part recommendation, which we believe will address both council's desire to create more flexibility and the need to provide event organizers with the advanced notice they require in order to secure critical service vendors. and the need to provide event organizers with the advanced notice they require in order to secure critical service vendors. I'm going to go over each part of the recommendation before we ask for council's feedback. The current process allows for organizers to submit an event interest form to request a venue and date up to one year in advance, and then organizers are notified within a couple of weeks of the status of their request. In order to provide more flexibility and an opportunity for new events to secure peak season dates, staff recommend modifying when interest forms are submitted, reviewed, and evaluated. The new process would create a priority review window. Organizers would be able to submit their interest form eleven to thirteen months in advance for priority consideration. Once the two-month window closes, all requests will be, all requests received would be evaluated, and if necessary, prioritized based on recommended criteria. Interest forms received after the window closes would continue to be processed on a first come, first served basis. Staff propose using these priority, priority evaluation criteria to resolve any conflicts with permit limits or requested dates and venues. The criteria address demonstrated history, purpose and cultural diversity, free and/or low-cost opportunities, opportunities for local involvement, nonprofit support, and council goals or initiatives. Now, we'd like to ask for council's feedback on modifying the event interest form process and support of the proposed priority criteria.
Not seeing, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Sudi. I support the criteria that are here. Although, there's one thing that is missing now that we're merging this with what was previously, also had the multi-day and weekend events, and that's the economic development tourism impact. And I am wondering where that fits in within the current one, or if that's something that could be added? Because we have a number of events. I'll take Little League Word Series as one example, that if you take a look at what Councilmember Nixon talks about in the Tourism Development Committee, about bringing new people into Kirkland, getting heads in beds, that should be a part of our prioritization criteria. The disadvantage, or the, even broader than that, though, just bringing people in from around the region that may not be within the, what's the TDC, a little bit fifty miles?
Fifty miles.
Yeah, I was saying, bringing more people into Kirkland from around the region, so looking at that, those things.
We consider the add additional criteria like that.
And I would agree with that one entirely. Councilmember Nixon?
Yeah, just quickly, John and Sudi, I can share with you the criteria that the TDC uses for the current tourism grant program. There's like, I think right now it's about nine different criteria that we look at. Not all of them would have to be considered for this purpose. But, but I agree with the Deputy Mayor that we should look at business development or economic development and tourism as criteria as well.
Okay, go ahead, Deputy.
And just, Councilmember Nixon and I had a conversation, and I didn't propose the tourism criteria in its entirety, because it's kind of unwieldy, but hopefully you can use that as inspiration.
Yeah, we'll look at it. I don't want to say pick and choose, but pick and choose the best parts of it. Incorporate that into the.
Okay, let's go. I think you.
So no other questions on scheduling or?
Doesn't look like it, nope.
Awesome. Well, now we'll get to the, everyone's favorite topic. The last major issue that we were asked to address was event fees. Last time in October, there were several concerns about the fee model presented. Specifically, you asked us to come back with an updated model that reduced the impact on event organizers. We have made several changes to the fee structure to address your concerns. Over the next few slides, I will provide an overview of the, where we were, our previous discussions, as well as the updated fee model, just to provide some, some direction. So as Sudi outlined earlier, we've been working on updating many of the details related to special events for several years now. Over the course of our different conversations, your direction has been to develop a fee structure that is simple and easy to understand. Rather than pursue a flat fee model, you requested an à la carte model be developed, so each event pays their fair share. During the previous budget cycle, the 2122 budget cycle, the special projects coordinator position was converted to a limited term position. The expectation at the time was for us to look into funding position using revenue generated through special event fees. When the position was later converted back to an ongoing position, it was determined that that level of cost recovery was no longer necessary. However, we were pretty far down the road in developing the model, so we presented what the model looked like in October, based on that original request. But knowing that the, the high costs to event organizers shown, or seeing the, the high cost that it was, would have put on event organizers, you requested that we further refine the model to reduce that impact. This slide shows a high-level comparison of the, the current fee structure on the left compared to the proposed fee model on the right. This is almost the exact same slide as I presented in October. On the left side, on the next slide, I'll provide more detail on the changes that have, that we've made since the last meeting. As a reminder, the current fee structure includes a $50 application fee and a $110 event permit fee. Most events do not pay anything for park use. The only spaces that event organizers pay a fee for include Heritage Hall, Marina Morage, and closure of the Lakeshore Plaza or auxiliary parking lots. Like we discussed last time, the proposed fee model increases the application fee to $100, and it also increases the permit fee to a variable fee structure ranging from $250 to $500, depending on the size of the event. The biggest difference in the, the proposed fee model are the, excuse me, the biggest difference in the proposed fee model is that we actually are charging for park use. Similar to the, the permit fee, park use fees are proposed to vary based on the size of the event. The larger the event, the greater the impact the event has on the park itself. And by charging a rental fee to event organizers, they'd be held to the same standard as the community. One item of note, the funding model does not talk about, does not address fees charged by other departments. Those fees are managed by those other departments, and those would be things like IFC permits, variable message board, rental fees, police coverage for events, or other penalties that public works may charge. So we only focused on the park fees and social event fees. So as I previously, previously mentioned, the funding model was developed in order to fully fund the special projects coordinator position. However, we anticipated that there would be some concern with the impact to events. So we developed a model with a lot of flexibility in mind. We did not have time to get into all the specifics during our last presentation, but we built in several ways this fee model could be adjusted to achieve a desired result. The updated funding model included in your packet shows all these discounts, whereas last time we didn't actually turn those levers on or turn those switches on to activate those discounts. So on this slide, you'll see the, the kind of summary of all the, the major changes that we did. The first change was to lower the park use fees. Pretty clear feedback that the, the rates we proposed were a little high, so the updated fees can be seen in attachment D. And I'll also show those on the screen here in a few slides. Second, we split apart the, the fees into weekday rates and weekend rates. Weekday rates would, would apply to events taking place Monday through Thursday, with weekend rates being Friday through Sunday. And the last, and probably the most impactful change, was we included additional discounts based on the type of the event. We felt that events that do not charge admission should receive an additional 50% discount on the park use fees, while city council designated community events would receive a 75% discount. As a reminder, the, currently the Summer Concert Series and the, and Winter Fest are the two designated community events. So, Kirkland is and was still a designated community event, but it is no longer an outside event. It's a city event now, so it doesn't necessarily apply. And a couple of slides, I'm going to show how we break down all these fees, how these discounts work, just to really help spell out and show you how those calculations are working. But next, I'm going to go through and just remind everyone of the different fee structures. So this slide shows the permit and application fees used in the model. The far right column shows the discounts of the, how the park fees would be adjusted based on the size of the event. So a large event would pay 100% of the park use fees, a medium event would pay 75% of the, the fee listed, and a small event would pay 50%. On this slide, you will see all the proposed park use fees or rent, if you want to call it that. These are the base rates, so when, when it says an event pays 100%, they would pay whatever the, this rate would say. So 100% of Allock Pavilion on the weekend would be a $720 fee. If there were a medium event, they would pay the 75% of the fee and whatnot. And then the, the last item was the event discounts. So free events would receive a 50% discount on top of their, the, the rates reduced by their event size. And then community events would receive a 75% discount. So. So to put it all together, I wanted to provide an example of how the funding model calculated park fees for the evening concert series, because this one includes a variety of different elements in it. So details about this event are shown on the left side of the slide. This event takes place over seven different days at Marina Park on Thursday evenings. So the weekday rental rate for Marina Park would apply, which is $1,250 per day. This event is considered a medium-sized event, so it would pay 75% of the daily use rate. And, and as a designated community event, it would receive an additional 75% discount. So what that looks like. So to calculate the park use fees, first, what I do is I calculate the daily rate based on the event size. As a medium event, this event would be charged $937.50 per day. You multiply this times the number of event days to get your pre-discounted total of $6,562.50. Then you add in the 75% discount for being a designated community event, and the fee for this, the Summer Concert Series comes down to $1,640.63. This was one example. I do want to provide one other example, because I'm aware there are several questions about how the fees were calculated and what the fees should be for the Kirkland Wednesday Market. So I have another example, walk you through these, as well as a proposed alternate method. So similar to the last slide, the details are on the left, and then I'll show the calculations on the right. This event takes place over eighteen days at Marina Park on Wednesday afternoons. As with the previous example, the weekday rental rate for Marina Park is $1,250 per day. As a large event, this event would pay 100% of the daily usage rates. And since the event is free, it would receive an additional 50% discount on the park use fees. So the standard fee structure, again, you calculate it out by figuring out the daily rate. As a large event, this event would be charged the $1,250 per day rate. Multiply that by eighteen days to get your pre-discounted total of $22,500. However, as this is a free event, it would qualify for an additional 50% discount, which brings this down to $1,1250. After giving this further consideration, I know this doesn't match what's in the packet, but I'm kind of showing, this is how the fees would normally be calculated. We have a, we have an alternate recommendation for the, the Wednesday market. We knew that we wanted to get these fees lower, so we just proposed a flat rate in the memo, but after giving it some further thought and evaluating things, we have an alternate recommendation. City council could designate the Wednesday market as a community event, which would give the event a 75% discount on the park use fees. Most of the calculations there's, are the same, but the larger discount for the community events, it brings the total park use fee down to $5,625. This recommendation would work with, within the overall funding structure as proposed. As you proposed, one of our goals was to, of the overall process was to streamline and create efficiencies and eliminate one-offs and special carve-outs within the, the code or within the policy. So if council desires to reduce the fees for the Wednesday market, this would be the, the recommended strategy. Additionally, if council wants to reduce those fees even further, that 75% discount, you could, you could change that to whatever you want, really. It could be 80%, 90%, that was just a, a price that we put in the, the structure, so.
I have a question for City Manager. Kurt, don't, do, do we not contract with the Kirkland Downtown Association to put on these events?
We do. This event is one of their scopes of work.
Okay, so we, we contract with them to put on the, a number of events, including all the concert series.
That's correct.
And then we pay them a certain amount of money to help them do that. And now we're going to send them a bill for $20,000 more than we've ever sent them before to continue putting those events on. I don't understand the logic of this when I think about it.
I think that's the feedback we're looking for. There, there's nothing that would stop us from deciding that this is an event that doesn't pay something beyond the application fee, if the council is interested in that. We're trying to show a consistent methodology for all the events, but that's certainly because it's a partnership.
So that's why I wonder if there isn't something else that we should be talking about. I know that right now the KDA is in conversation with the, with the city about what their contract should look like around the Fourth of July and all of the events. So it feels premature to me for us to agree to something. It, it's like they're a different animal. I, I don't know. Councilmember Nixon?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I have a specific proposal. What I would propose is that we eliminate park rental fees and permit fees for events that are run by 501(c)(3) organizations, which includes KDA, that are open to the general public free of charge. So basically, we'd be treating them the same way as we treat events that are run by Parks and Community Services, except for the application fee. I did some math on attachment E, and if we did this, based on the numbers in that chart, it would reduce the projected revenue by about $10,000 in park rental fees and about $3,000 in permit fees, so 13,000 total. And that still leaves you all about $44,000 in revenue from events compared to the $56,668 that the table shows now. And we could potentially require these 501(c)(3) general public free events to be council designated. Maybe that's more overhead than we want of, of having to look at all those, although it could be a one-pager that comes in on consent. You know, says, yeah, council designates this by passing the consent calendar. But my feeling is that the 501(c)(3)'s that are sponsoring events are either doing it on behalf of the city or they're a cause that the city supports. And they are, by being open to the public free of charge, they're enhancing the quality of life in Kirkland, providing more opportunities for our citizens to get together. And these are things we should support and not burden with these additional fees. So that, that's my proposal. 501(c)(3) sponsored, open to the general public free of charge, would have no permit fees and no park rental fees.
Councilmember Pascal.
Good proposal, Councilmember Nixon. I guess, you know, thinking about this, I, before I heard the mayor speak, I was thinking we were on the right track, except the things that did stick out to me when I was reviewing the packet were the, the Wednesday market and the concert series, both the kids and the Thursday evening ones. And, you know, and then we also did receive that letter today, this afternoon, from the Kirkland Downtown Association. So it kind of solidified in my mind that, that I do, I do think we need to, to modify things. And I guess the question for me, though, is whether to go, you know, Toby, Councilmember Nixon, with your, your proposal, that's kind of more overarching, or just be more surgical with, you know, the concerts and the, and the, the Wednesday market. That's, that's the only thing I'm wrestling with in my head. So, but I, I think that's some, some work that, that staff can do and kind of compare, or contrast the two. At least in my mind, that was kind of what I would, I would ask for, is to, is to look at that and see what makes the most sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first, Sudi and John and Lynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first, Sudi and John and Lynn, we recognize how hard you've worked on this and that you've, it's hard, it's challenging, and you've worked with a lot of stakeholders and a lot of event planners, and so, so forgive us for continuing to meddle, but here we are. I also think that KDA is a special circumstance. You know, as the mayor said, we provide them funding to put on these events, and then we want to turn around and take money away from them for putting on events that we support and want to happen, and these are free. They draw visitors to the park. They provide activities for families and children. They support local businesses. They help businesses launch. The Wednesday market lets people test their, their commodity, their business, so that they can go turn around and create a storefront down the road. So I'm with Councilmember, I, I appreciate Councilmember Nixon's suggestion, but I wouldn't put everybody in the same bucket. I think KDA is special. My suggestion for KDA is to go ahead and charge the application fee and the permit fee, but not charge the park usage fee. So you just got three different answers from three different council members. But I do feel like KDA needs to be managed in a different way. Thank you.
Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a fourth suggestion. No, I, I actually, so I really like, well, I like everything that's been said, actually. I like Councilmember Nixon's idea. It's, it's definitely a, you know, much bigger umbrella. I like what Councilmember Pascal's saying. You could maybe, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but maybe the big umbrella doesn't quite make sense, maybe something more surgical, which kind of leads, I think Councilmember Curtis is talking about, is something surgical for KDA. I'm wondering if there's a middle ground, which is taking what Councilmember Nixon has proposed, 501(c)(3), free to the public, and adding, instead of tar, instead of sort of having it targeted at particular events or a particular organization, what we could say as a principle that we could apply to new situations in the future, even if circumstances change, would be something like 501(c)(3) open to the public, free, free to the public, plus grant-funded by the city. If you have those three elements, and I think KDA would fall underneath that, then perhaps, and I don't know between Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Nixon's ideas of which fees would get waived, but let's just suffice it to say that certain fees would be waived, so that we...
I would like to get clarification on that, because it's, there's lots of other fees beyond park fees. So I just want to see what we're, what we're waiving for them, so we're clear.
I think we're talking about the new use of park fees.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
And not the police.
Right.
Fees and those kind of things, or fire, fire department fees.
Is that clear, John?
Yes.
And so if we could come up with a prin, I, I'm going to call this a principled approach. A principled approach that we could apply to even new circumstances that haven't arisen yet. I kind of like that idea. New organization that, you know, we can apply the same principle. And it kind of goes to what Councilmember Curtis is saying. We're, we're, we're grant-funding money to these organizations, and then we're asking them to turn around and pay it back to us. So that's what I would suggest. I don't actually mean, I was joking when I said it's a fourth way. I'm hoping, actually, it's a little bit of a compromise right down the middle way that we can all, maybe some of my colleagues can nod, you know, agree with, too.
I think these guys can come back with something.
Could I?
Lynn, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we can run a couple scenarios and bring them back.
So I just, if I may, I just want to make one observation, then maybe ask if we could lean more towards the Councilmember Curtis concept, because, so, for example, chump change is a 501(c)(3). What we'd see is moving to everybody staying there, 501(c)(3), you know. So I just think we want to make sure that the goal, we thought, was if you want to protect some of the partnership organizations, we could do something like that.
Madam Mayor. But to, to be clear, chump change is not free and open to the general public. It's why 501(c)(3) is not sufficient. It's a 501(c)(3) sponsored event that is open to the general public free of charge, so.
I, I think that's an important distinction. I think what my concern would be is that, what I think will likely happen is they'll approach you and say, half of this is going to be free and open to the public, and so can we have a 50% discount on the 50% discount? Right, so just, I think, trying to get to simplicity. But the goal is certainly not to overburden, especially partnership organizations like the KDA. So why don't we come back with, with a couple tiered options on this? But are you okay with the rest of the fee categories with still some more work to be done on, like, the Wednesday market and the concerts in the park and the, and the sort of partnership groups?
I think so.
And we could have a 501(c)(3) option, like you discussed, Councilmember Nixon.
Because I'm, when I look at it, I look at Hope Link puts on the Turkey Trot. They, but they sell tickets to that, so they, so they pay.
And there are races that have, so we, you've, you've hit on a few things that we kind of expected, your questions. If any portion of the event was paid, we would treat the entire event as a paid event, and that would be written into the spec, the, the deal. There are some events that have a suggested donation that you have to make in order to enter the race. That would be considered a paid event as well. It's strictly, you don't have to pay anything. You can go experience the event. You can go watch the concert. You can go walk around the market. Those would be the free events that we were envisioning.
Councilmember Curtis.
I have one more question that aligns to what we're talking about before we move off. And in our standards, we say that the criteria for, woo, I need a break. The criteria says directly benefits a nonprofit organization serving Kirkland residents. But that's so open-ended. And does that mean that they provide 10% of their profits to a nonprofit? Or $50 or, so since we're coming back with this, I would really appreciate if you look at that again and provide more specificity around how they, how these organizations directly benefit a nonprofit. Just adding to the meddling and your headache, future headaches.
Anything else?
So just, we don't, we don't currently set those kind of limits, because we don't know what that organization might make, and there's a lot of different variables they have, like if it rained or, or things like that. So we certainly could try to draft some, but that also gets complicated fairly quickly.
So that might be the answer that comes back. Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One quick point of clarification, just because City Manager did follow up our discussion with the, with the question about chump change. So in my, I just want to be clear, my proposal would be they would have to meet all three elements. 501(c)(3), free the public, much in the way that Deputy Director Lloyd described. Basically, they can't charge anything. And it's an organization that the city provides grant funding to. If they met all three of those elements, then they would get the special treatment that we're, that I, that I think some of my colleagues are describing.
Councilmember Curtis.
But, but is it grant funding or is it tourism development grant funding? We have to be specific about the funding we're providing.
City provides funding.
Councilmember Nixon.
Yeah, and KDA funding, for example, does not come from tourism funds, so it wouldn't be linked there. But like, looking at the list of events, one of them is sponsored by Studio East, which is definitely a 501(c)(3). But I'm not sure that they get funding outside of the tourism program. They do get funding from the tourism program, but I don't think they get funding outside of the tourism program. So that would be an interesting discussion.
I, I believe they get their admissions tax refunded, but other than that, I don't think.
Okay. And one of the ones that's free and sponsored by a nonprofit is the Waterfront Car Show. This is a big event. It brings a lot of people into downtown, but it's, it's free.
It's free to the public, but, but the cars paid.
An entry fee.
To participate.
Right.
So I, I would think that that would not qualify then.
Well, so, I mean, that's a good question. The ones, does the Wednesday market charge people a fee for the tables that they rent? So I, I did not consider that to be, because the events still have operating costs they need to cover. So I think the fact that they charge, like, the, the car drivers or, or car owners to bring their car in, or an arts and crafts person to have a table at the Wednesday market. I don't think that, I don't think that would disqualify them. It's the fact that it's free entry to the public that I think is the key thing.
Okay. You got what you need.
Well, I think we do, except for one small subcategory that we're going to work back, back around. But we can adopt this structure. We just need to come back with this, some further options on the nonprofit-related and partnership-related events.
Right.
We'll come up with something, so appreciate your feedback.
Oh, John, she's not done.
I'm still here.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple comments on the KMC. We, on 19/24/10, under definitions, we changed, we say "community holiday" or "tradition", and I would suggest that we say "or special event". Tradition feels too traditional and restrictive. And I'm thinking a special event if a community member goes to Mars or they won a Nobel Peace Prize. So I think that community holiday or tradition just boxes us in. We talked specifically about beer and wine gardens. What if somebody wants to do a whiskey garden or cider tasting? So I'm wondering if we want to revise that definition. And in 19/24/05, we use the word "citizens", and we've been using "community", "community members" rather than "citizens". Thank you.
Good catch. I tried to catch all those.
Okay. Are we done with this topic? Okay, then we're going to leave.
Oh, we'll be back, don't you worry.
Oh, I know. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back in 15 minutes. Let me do the ad math. Thirty-eight, yeah. Yeah.
There we go, there's me button.
Thirty-eight.
Good evening, council. Thank you, city manager. Tonight, we have the second legislative update of the 2023 legislative session. There you go. I have three quick topics I'll be covering with you and then turning things back to you for a conversation. We'll kick things off with an update of where we are in session right now. Last meeting, we were in week two. We're officially now in month two. The first round of cutoff deadlines are rapidly approaching with the policy committee cutoff coming next week. Last meeting, we had more than 800 bills introduced. Now we're over 1,500. For reference, around 1,000 bills were introduced during each of the last two sessions. We are now on track to easily meet or exceed even pre-pandemic legislation levels. So definitely a big volume of bills this year. We're tracking more than 300 bills and staff have already completed nearly 450 reviews. As I noted last time, we'll have a much better sense of what legislation has legs. And we're best to focus our efforts with the passage of the committee cutoffs and House of Origin cutoffs later this month. At your next meeting, we'll have crossed the first big hurdle. And the legislature will be in the big fiscal committee push before completely changing gears and going almost full-time on the floor. And that takes us to an update on how it's going so far this session. Starting with the housing-focused legislative priorities. The Senate version of our accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, bill has made it out of the policy committee. The bill has been narrowed to be a King County pilot program to address some implementation workload concerns by assessors of other counties. This approach has strong bipartisan support, is the top priority of the King County assessor, and is continuing to move through the process with its public hearing in the fiscal committee yesterday. Due to limited availability of council members, City Manager Triplett testified at that hearing. The House version of our ADU bill has been introduced by Representative Clova and will receive its public hearing tomorrow. We anticipate that this bill will be also narrowed to be a King County pilot. And Councilmember Black and our lobbyist Brian Enzlo will testify at the hearing tomorrow to speak about the overarching policy and the technical aspects of the bill. And the long-anticipated REIT bill has been introduced by former Speaker Chopp and has over 30 co-sponsors. The bill had its hearing earlier today where Councilmember Curtis joined local officials from around the state to testify and support, and is scheduled to be exact out of committee later this week. As the rest of the priority agenda is a little more general than in years past, and with the high volume of bills this session, there are a lot of bills that fall into the policy buckets of the priority agenda. You may have noticed quite a few bills with the priority checkbox on our bill tracker compared to years past. As we don't have the capacity to treat each of those bills as our own, like the ADU or REIT bill I mentioned on the last slide, we are leaning on our ally organizations and bill sponsors to flag key testimony opportunities for legislation most likely to move the furthest as we continue to review all the incoming legislation. Also, that reflected in the much larger list of bills that we signed in support versus testified in support. Starting with the bills that we testified since your last meeting. Senate Bill 5493 was an affordable housing funding proposal that eliminates ABNO tax exemption. Councilmember Black testified on January 25th. And then House Bill 1589 flagged by staff as a sustainability bill that aligns with our sustainability master plan. Deputy Mayor Arnold testified yesterday. Signing in support, our lobbyists Brian Enzlo and Brian McConaughey also signed in or are signing in support of a lengthy list of bills related to gun, oh, sorry. Oops, going back. Sorry. Carry away with looking. It's raised gun safety, Senate Bill 5078, protecting public safety by establishing duties of firearm industry members. Related to housing, that long list of bills includes lots bidding, local permit review processes, utility connection charges, ADU construction, missing middle, condo affordability, multifamily tax exemption extensions, transit-oriented development, emergency shelter standards, and affordable housing prevention. Related to behavioral health, we had House Bill 1348, establishing the profession of a behavioral health support specialist at the University of Washington. Related to sustainability, we had bills related to energy labeling of residential buildings, battery stewardship, transportation funding for bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and energy in buildings. Related to reproductive rights, there are a handful of bills related to cost sharing for abortions, constitutional amendment to address reproductive freedom, and health data collection, sharing, and selling. And then sort of falling into the general principles or council gold bucket, we had a handful of bills related to public works assistance revolving accounts, pedestrian safety, tax increment finance, financing technical fixes, eligibility for law enforcement positions, and Washington State tourism funding. And then the loan bill in which we have signed in opposition is House Bill 1025, the private right of action for harm from violations by peace officers. This bill increases liability for cities and individual police officers, making it more expensive for cities to secure insurance and likely exacerbating the difficulty in recruiting or retaining strong candidates to serve in these positions. As I noted last time, there are a lot of great bills, lots of bills that could be great with some modifications. A good number of bills that don't align with our values. Things are moving quickly and changing often, so we will miss some opportunities to participate in every piece of legislation that does impact the city. We'll continue evaluating, tracking, and monitoring legislation to see what has legs over the next few weeks. So that takes me back to discussion slide. We'll start with a flag that the bill tracker in your packet, the stated positions there are the recommendations by the Legislative Work Group and are considered acknowledged by council after this discussion unless you want to pull any for further conversation. And then the three bills that I wanted to provide some process updates on, sort of kick off your conversation, starts with an update on the Blake decision fix. There are a handful of different proposals to pick back up the drug possession legality question in response to the state Supreme Court's Blake decision a few years ago. Yesterday morning, the Senate Law and Justice Committee had their Blake fix hearing day that heard most of the proposals under consideration in the Senate. They each tackled the problem in a variety of different ways, most of which proposed making drug possession a misdemeanor with varying degrees of diversion program requirements and coordination. You will continue to track this legislation and can provide more, who can provide more updates as the policy direction the legislature will be taking becomes more clear. Similarly, vehicular pursuits, there are a handful of different proposals to address the repeatedly requested vehicular pursuit limitation imposed on police over the last few years. Recommendations range from a full transition back to the old standard, subtle modifications to address some specific concerns, or putting together a study group to recommend proposals in future sessions. As with the Blake fix proposals, we're continuing to track the legislation under consideration and continue to provide updates. And then a new topic that I wanted to flag for conversation was the 1% property tax cap. As recommended by the state's Tax Structure Work Group that has been meeting over the last year, there are currently two different proposals to lift the 1% property tax cap. The House version is sponsored by Representative Ormsby, the Appropriations Chair in the House. And the Senate version is sponsored by our Senator Cooter. Both effectively proposed lifting the property tax cap to reflect CPI and population increase with a cap of 3%. The policy has been on the city's priority agenda in years past but has dropped off over time. And as these policies, as these policies lost traction. While we won't know for a while how mobile these policies will be this year, there's quite a bit of interest and momentum, at least starting the conversation again, which is a great start for potentially making some actual traction on this moving forward. And that's what I have for you for tonight. Happy to turn things back to you and as usual, answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Diana. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things. First, thank you, Diana. You're doing an awesome job. And we're having fun, even though the avalanche of bills that we're seeing. And I really want to thank our subject matter experts because they are working so hard. And if you've taken the time to look at their reviews of the bills, they're thorough, they're thoughtful, they're comprehensive. And I recognize that it's a big investment of their time on top of everything else. So thank you to staff, thank you to everyone. Diana just mentioned HB 1670, which is raising the 1% cap on property taxes. It's not on our legislative, legislative agenda. I would like council support to elevate this bill into our priorities so that it'll allow us to sign on and testify. So I'm looking for some thumbs up on that from everyone. Okay.
I think you'll.
I think we got a majority here. All right. And then I can't believe, I don't know if I've said this last time, but the sustainability bills are a lot and our statement is broad. And so we are asking our subject matter experts to go back through the bills and designate which bills are in our sustainability master plan that the council has already approved. And that helps us prioritize what sustainability bills that we put our energy behind. Last thing, thank you to everyone who follows up with Diana when they've received requests to testify. We really appreciate that. Just a reminder that if you do testify on your own behalf, to send Diana a copy of your testimony. I think that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Diana, for all your work on an incredible session. I had no idea of the number of bills. And each of those years, we were hearing from the team on how that was a record. And this is three times that. I would note that most of this council is going to be at Association of Washington Cities in Olympia next week. Is there anything that we need to know or decide as a council?
Diana, you want to take that or?
Yeah, go ahead, Diana. I was going to say, not that we know of, but you are working on the schedule.
Yeah, not yet. We have meetings scheduled with all but one of our members. And so we'll have a full schedule for everyone. And we'll kind of divvy up who will attend which meetings. But we're very excited to get some time with all of our members and spend some time with them at the East Side Dinner on Wednesday night.
And as I mentioned to Deputy Mayor Arnold this afternoon, we're going to try and do something at the Ledge Meeting on Friday to talk about how to make that dinner a little bit more meaningful rather than just a bunch of talking heads. So we'll see what we can do. Limits. Okay. Thank you, Diana. All right, so that takes us to Board and Commission Interview Committee selection. I think all you have to do is call in the city manager.
Yes, so as you know, the city clerk will be pulling three names to select the interview selection committee. And then we'll be working with you to schedule a time for the preview.
Excellent. Okay, number one is?
Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. We are back in session after a short break, and we are at item number C on our business agenda, our 2023 legislative agenda update. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. To provide that update is our government affairs manager, Diana Hart.
Welcome, Diana.
There we go. There's me button. Good evening, council. Thank you, city manager. Tonight, we have the second legislative update of the 2023 legislative session. I have three quick topics I'll be covering with you and then turning things back to you for a conversation. We'll kick things off with an update of where we are in session right now. Last meeting, we were in week two. We're officially now in month two. The first round of cutoff deadlines are rapidly approaching with the policy committee cutoff coming next week. Last meeting, we had more than 800 bills introduced. Now, we're over 1,500. For reference, around 1,000 bills were introduced during each of the last two sessions. We are now on track to easily meet or exceed even pre-pandemic legislation levels. So definitely a big volume of bills this year. We're tracking more than 300 bills, and staff have already completed nearly 450 reviews. As I noted last time, we'll have a much better sense of what legislation has legs, and we're best to focus our efforts with the passage of the committee cutoffs and House of Origin cutoffs later this month. At your next meeting, we'll have crossed the first big hurdle, and the legislature will be in the big fiscal committee push before completely changing gears and going almost full-time on the floor. And that takes us to an update on how it's going so far this session. Starting with the housing-focused legislative priorities, the Senate version of our accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, bill has made it out of the policy committee. The bill has been narrowed to be a King County pilot program to address some implementation workload concerns by assessors of other counties. This approach has strong bipartisan support, is the top priority of the King County assessor, and is continuing to move the process with its public hearing in the fiscal committee yesterday. Due to limited availability of council members, City Manager Triplett testified at that hearing. The House version of our ADU bill has been introduced by Representative Clova and will receive its public hearing tomorrow. We anticipate that this bill will be also narrowed to be a King County pilot, and Councilmember Black and our lobbyist Brian Enzlo will testify at the hearing tomorrow to speak about the overarching policy and the technical aspects of the bill. And the long-anticipated REIT bill has been introduced by former Speaker Chopp and has over 30 co-sponsors. The bill had its hearing earlier today, where Councilmember Curtis joined local officials from around the state to testify in support, and is scheduled to be exact out of committee later this week. As the rest of the priority agenda is a little more general than in years past, and with the high volume of bills this session, there are a lot of bills that fall into the policy buckets of the priority agenda. You may have noticed quite a few bills with the priority checkbox on our bill tracker compared to years past. As we don't have the capacity to treat each of those bills as our own, like the ADU or REIT bill I mentioned on the last slide, we are leaning on our ally organizations and bill sponsors to fly key testimony opportunities or legislation most likely to move the furthest as we continue to review all the incoming legislation. Also, that reflected in the much larger list of bills that we signed in support versus testified in support. Starting with the bills that we testified since your last meeting, Senate Bill 5493 was an affordable housing funding proposal that eliminates a B and O tax exemption. Councilmember Black testified on January 25th. And then House Bill 1589 flagged by staff as a sustainability bill that aligns with our sustainability master plan. Deputy Mayor Arnold testified yesterday. Signing in support, our lobbyists, Brian Enzlo and Brian McConaughey, also signed in or are signing Kirkland in support of a lengthy list of bills related to gun-- sorry. Sorry. Carry away with looking. It's raised gun safety, Senate Bill 5078, protecting public safety by establishing duties of firearm industry members related to housing. That long list of bills includes lots bidding, local permit review processes, utility connection charges, ADU construction, missing middle, condo affordability, multifamily tax exemption extensions, transit-oriented development, emergency shelter standards, and affordable housing prevention. Related to behavioral health, we had House Bill 1348, establishing the profession of a behavioral health support specialist, the University of Washington. Related to sustainability, we had bills related to energy labeling of residential buildings, battery stewardship, transportation funding for bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and energy in buildings. Related to reproductive rights, there are a handful of bills related to cost sharing for abortions, constitutional amendment to address reproductive freedom and health data collection, sharing, and selling. And then sort of falling into the general principles or council goal bucket, we had a handful of bills related to public work assistance revolving accounts, pedestrian safety, tax increment finance, financing technical fixes, eligibility for law enforcement positions, and Washington State tourism funding. And then the loan bill in which we have signed in opposition is House Bill 1025, the private right of action for harm from violations by peace officers. This bill increases liability for cities and individual police officers, making it more expensive for cities to secure insurance and likely exacerbating the difficulty in recruiting or retaining strong candidates to serve in these positions. As I noted last time, there are a lot of great bills, lots of bills that could be great with some modifications, a good number of bills that don't align as our values. Things are moving quickly and changing often, so we will miss some opportunities to participate in every piece of legislation that does impact the city. We'll continue evaluating, tracking, and monitoring legislation to see what has legs over the next few weeks. So that takes me back to discussion slide. We'll start with a flag that the bill tracker in your packet, the stated positions there are the recommendations by the legislative work group and are considered acknowledged by council after this discussion, unless you want to pull any for further conversation. And then the three bills that I wanted to provide some process updates on, sort of kick off your conversation, starts with an update on the Blake decision fix. There are a handful of different proposals to pick back up the drug possession legality question in response to the state Supreme Court's Blake decision a few years ago. Yesterday morning, the Senate Law and Justice Committee had their Blake fix hearing day that heard most of the proposals under consideration in the Senate. They each tackled the problem in a variety of different ways, most of which proposed making drug possession a misdemeanor with bearing degrees of diversion program requirements and coordination. You will continue to track this legislation and can provide more, who can provide more updates as a policy direction the legislature will be taking becomes more clear. Similarly, vehicular pursuits, there are a handful of different proposals to address the repeatedly requested vehicular pursuit limitation imposed on police over the last few years. Recommendations range from a full transition back to the old standard, subtle modifications to address some specific concerns, or putting together a study group to recommend proposals in future sessions. As with the Blake fix proposals, we're continuing to track the legislation under consideration and continue to provide updates. And then a new topic that I wanted to flag for conversation was the 1% property tax cap. As recommended by the state's tax structure work group that has been meeting over the last year, there are currently two different proposals to lift the 1% property tax cap. The House version is sponsored by Representative Ormsby, the appropriations chair in the House, and the Senate version is sponsored by our Senator Cooter. Both effectively proposed lifting the property tax cap to reflect CPI and population increase with a cap of 3%. The policy has been on the city's priority agenda in years past but has dropped off over time, and as these policies, as these policies lost traction. While we won't know for a while how mobile these policies will be this year, there's quite a bit of interest and momentum, at least starting the conversation again, which is a great start for potentially making some actual traction on this moving forward. And that's what I have for you for tonight. Happy to turn things back to you and, as usual, answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Diana. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things. First, thank you, Diana. You're doing an awesome job, and we're having fun, even though the avalanche of bills that we're seeing. And I really want to thank our subject matter experts because they are working so hard. And if you've taken the time to look at their reviews of the bills, they're thorough, they're thoughtful, they're comprehensive, and I recognize that it's a big investment of their time on top of everything else. So, thank you to staff. Thank you to everyone. Diana just mentioned HB 1670, which is raising the 1% cap on property taxes. It's not on our legislative agenda. I would like council support to elevate this bill into our priorities so that it'll allow us to sign on and testify. So I'm looking for some thumbs up on that from everyone.
I think you.
I think we got a majority here. All right. And then I can't believe, I don't know if I've said this last time, but the sustainability bills are a lot, and our statement is broad. And so we are asking our subject matter experts to go back through the bills and designate which bills are in our sustainability master plan that the council has already approved, and that helps us prioritize what sustainable bills that we put our energy behind. Last thing, thank you to everyone who follows up with Diana when they've received requests to testify. We really appreciate that. Just a reminder that if you do testify on your own behalf, to send Diana a copy of your testimony. I think that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Diana, for all your work on incredible session. I had no idea of the number of bills. And each of those years, we were hearing from the team on how that was a record. And this is three times that. I would note that most of this council is going to be Association of Washington Cities in Olympia next week. Is there anything that we need to know or decide as a council?
Diana, you want to take that, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Diana. I was going to say, not that we know of, but you are working on the schedule.
Yeah, not yet. We have meetings scheduled with, I think, all but one of our members. And so we'll have a full schedule for everyone, and we'll kind of divvy up who will attend which meetings. But we're very excited to get some time with all of our members and spend some time with them at the East Side Dinner on Wednesday.
And as I mentioned to Deputy Mayor Arnold this afternoon, we're going to try and do something at the Ledge Meeting on Friday to talk about how to make that dinner a little bit more meaningful, rather than just a bunch of talking heads. So we'll see what we can do. Okay. Thank you, Diana. All right. So that takes us to board and commission interview committee selection. I think all you have to do is call in the city manager.
Yeah, so as you know, the city clerk will be pulling three names to select the interview selection committee, and then we'll be working with you to schedule a time for the preview.
Excellent. Okay. Number one is?
Councilmember Pascal.
And number two?
Councilmember Falcone.
All right, come on, this is it.
And Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Three leaders, great. Okay. And you're going to set that up, Kathy? Okay. This takes us to report, city council, regional, and committee reports. I noticed that we put the city council committee assignment discussion in here. Do we want to?
Yeah, so just the, this is different than the retreat conversation you had about how you select assignments. This was just an opportunity, since we normally do this for two years, if any council member had a change they needed to make, given an assignment they got, or a request they wanted to make of the mayor, that we thought this would be the time for that. So in the packet, you have the current list of committees, and we just want to have one opportunity for council members, if they needed to say something to the mayor and deputy mayor, this would be that time.
And I'm gonna, I'm just going to ask Councilmember Pascal, I noticed that you don't have the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee on here. Do you want that added?
I mean, I guess since you have the finance committee listed, that's fine.
Yeah.
I didn't know if those subcommittees belong on this or not.
Generally, we have listed them. I'll update Amy with those two. Okay, with that, I think I'll go backwards.
Madam Mayor, one thing, if we're updating committees related to those, I would note that I'm on the State Building Code Council Legislative Committee. So if you could--
Okay, thank you.
--note that on the matrix as well. Thank you.
All right. All right. And start with you tonight, Deputy Mayor.
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Pascal.
Just two, two things on committee reports. First, the Regional Transit Committee, Kimberly will be sending out the notes from the last two meetings. We'd been waiting on just analyzing the routes within Kirkland so that we could include updated information on how those routes are performing, because that directly relates to, you know, future considerations for service enhancements and things like that. So that should be coming to all of you soon. The second piece is, I was trying to remember, we did meet with Councilmember Falcone, I and city manager met with the Lake Washington School District on January 27th. I think that was, yeah, that was after our last meeting. It was, as usual, it's always a very great, great meeting to kind of check in, and we cover so many different topics. But we talked about, you know, the 85th Street Station area plan, the Transportation Benefit District, Houghton Village, Health Through Housing, traffic cameras, the Parks Exploratory Committee, school resource officers. So lots of good subjects, and Andrea took some really good notes, and she'll be sending those out as soon as we get concurrence from the school district, which tends to take, you know, a few weeks.
Great. I'm glad you were able to do that, though. Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was looking at my phone to look at my dates, to see if I had reported on PFAC the last time. We discussed the Houghton Park and Ride with PFAC. Everybody took it in stride. We are continuing to be highly engaged. We're getting some really tough, good questions from PFAC members. They're keeping us on our toes. Thursday meeting will be defining, we'll start narrowing it down. It's a tough process. And yeah, so we're continuing to narrow it down, and I'm looking forward to, oh, we had our feasibility study with the Aquatic Center on the last meeting, and so I'm looking forward to council taking a look on those on the 21st. GMPC, no surprise, I am now the GMPSEA Caucus Chair.
Okay.
So we will be hosting GMPC and AHC February 23rd in Kirkland, and we are buying everyone a lunch because food makes people work better together. The PIC tomorrow night is going to be discussing the Affordable Housing Committee recommendations. So councilmember Falcone and I are switching, and she will be attending PIC tomorrow night, so she can--
What'd you say? She can't--
Oh. I might be there. The plan was she was going to speak directly to the Affordable Housing Committee recommendations, but since she's not feeling well, I better rethink that and plan to attend myself.
I think I'm going to be there for the rate discussion for solid waste.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not much to report. One thing I just wanted to, I don't usually report on the Regional Law Safety and Justice Committee, but I did want to sort of emphasize, just so my colleagues know, just behavioral health, crisis response is going to continue being one of the hottest topics discussed by the Regional Law Safety Justice Committee. And we now have on, as an agenda item at every meeting, a report out by the Sound Cities Association representatives, and I'm one of them. I'm just proud that we, Kirkland basically takes the Sound Cities Association report at every meeting because we have something to report on our efforts on behavioral health, crisis response, and also just being subject matter experts, too, on some of the legislation that's going on that's related to regional, to public safety. And that comes from the hard work of our legislative work group. So I just think that's super exciting, and I wanted to sort of give a shout out to all of, to the council and the city and all the effort that we're doing in that regard. I'm going to play Councilmember Falcone's role on just one item and let folks in the public know about Snyder's Corner Dog Park. What are we calling that? A ribbon cutting opening? Yeah, anyway, a little celebration on Saturday, I think at 1:00 at Snyder's Corner Park to celebrate the Snyder's Corner Park. So certainly anyone who's listening, the public's welcome. And then, Mayor, you're going to talk about your state of the city address?
No, not till it happens.
Okay. All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Nixon.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to report from meetings, but on that table of council committee assignments, I just wanted to observe that the second line from the bottom of the page can be deleted.
Oh, good point. I noticed that myself.
Yeah, that was highlighted, and that will be taken care of, so.
Thank you for that. I don't actually have anything to report. I think you all got the Cascade Water Alliance report from the board meeting, and I think regional water quality will be coming out in a few days. But that'll turn that over to you, city manager.
Okay. So I'm going to use my president of Racer hat for just a second to give council updates, follow on Councilmember Black's comments. So this week and next week are an exciting time for Racer. We are actually starting interviews for executive directors. We had announced approval of the executive director hiring process. So just reading my notes, so February 8th tomorrow and February 10th, two different groups of the boards, there's five members of the board, so two groups of two, not me. The other two. We'll also have a police chief, a mental health partner, and another professional on the panel, and they're going to interview eight finalists. We had a really good pool of potential executive directors. The following week, I am going to be hosting the current community responders and cultural navigators from RADAR and Kirkland, as well as any member of the community advisory board from RADAR, to meet with the potential four finalists. And then we're going to be giving our recommendations to the full board, but it's going to take up the interviews of the top three, top four, the last week of February. So we're excited about getting all of this input, and like I said, we have a really strong group of eight, we believe, and are pretty excited to see what comes out of that for the final. So our goal is to hopefully have a decision by the first week of March, and obviously, we'd love to have an executive director on as soon as possible after that. But so the board's still working really well together. Everything's going great. We're getting fantastic support from Carly Jorga and the aggressive, the City of Kirkland team. It's been going very, very well. On the crisis response clinic side of things, we've been having ongoing talks with Connections, and Connections is now, having had to look at a lot of different options, is now back to looking at Kirkland as their primary location. And Morgan Matthews, who's the vice president of Connections, is actually going to be reaching out to each of you for an opportunity to talk with you about the potential site and just sort of share interests and ideas. So look for that. It's going to come through Beth and Amy Bowlen, and you don't need to meet with her, but if you want to, she's making that opportunity available. So. That is my highlight on Racer and the crisis clinic. Let me see if anyone has any questions on that before we go any further.
See any?
Okay. And then my last update, as I saw, you all saw, and I sent an email out, King County and the City of Seattle announced on Monday that they were eliminating requiring vaccination for COVID-19 as a condition of hiring. That impacts all of their employees and all their criteria, but also impacts the firefighters, EMTs, that were part of the contract requirement that King County had for all firefighter departments in King County. We have a directors' meeting tomorrow. We're going to assess Kirkland's response to all of that. Our current MOU does require that we then look at reinstatement of any firefighters who meet the qualifications, who wish to be reinstated. But beyond that, we'll also be looking at whether or not we also phase out our requirement. We currently have a requirement that people are vaccinated as well. So I will have more to say about that, but obviously, that's a big transition for everybody, and we'll be trying to do that thoughtfully and keep as many health precautions as we can, while at the same time recognizing that this is sort of moving into an endemic status. So those are my updates, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Do you need calendar updates?
That was my next one. All right. And so then, any calendar items?
I don't see any.
All right. So that concludes my report, and I believe we still have an executive session on potential litigation after the last items on the agenda.
So that will move us to our executive session. We will now go into the executive session to discuss the one issue, potential litigation. We will expect to reconvene a regular meeting at approximately, how much time do we need? 10 minutes. So approximately 10:15. And we will, yeah, only for the purposes of adjournment, sorry. So with that, we're out of here.